Good evening, everyone. A quorum of the city council being present. I call tonight's meeting of January 14, 2019, to order. Please rise if willing and able to salute the flag and pause for a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded with audio and visual aids, and we also have listening devices for anyone who may need them. Before we go to public comment on a motion by Vice Mayor Deveraux to accept the minutes of November 19, 2019, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. I'm going to -- I'll do public -- well, let me do this first. Explain public comment, and then I'll move suspension. So, public comment is a time in the meeting when the public can speak for up to three minutes on an issue on tonight's agenda, with the exception of communications and awaiting reports. You will see to your left a screen that will count down your three minutes. You will hear a tone at 15 seconds, which is your cue to start wrapping up, and then another tone when your three minutes is over, and then the trap door opens by the podium. We ask that you please keep your comments directed to the chair, not to individual councilors. We ask that folks in the audience please refrain from clapping or booing, or if you are the one person in public comment who is speaking on an issue that is different than everyone else in the audience, we want you to feel respected in this chamber. So, we ask for that as well. If you have written comments, there's a basket that I can't see up by the table. If you could leave your written comments in the basket, that makes it easier for our clerk. If you have comments on your tablet or phone, you can email them. There are cards, business cards, on the table as well. You can email them to the clerk, and if you do so by midnight tonight, they will be included in the minutes of this meeting. So, that explains public comment. I'm going to ask suspension to have Lori Lander come up and talk about Martin Luther King Helping Hands Day. This was -- I apologize to Lori because we were supposed to put this on the agenda, and we fell through. So, I don't think -- it's not on there, is it? There's a resolution on there, and that's right. Okay. So, there you go. I guess I didn't have to move suspension. So, let's just let them do their thing. Do you guys want to -- do you have a little bit of a -- do you want to come up?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll skip them on the -- when we get to their names, and then -- go ahead. Go ahead, Lori.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Bartle. Thank you, Mayor McGovern, Vice Mayor Deveraux, and the rest of the city council for giving us this opportunity to speak to you this evening. We're here to tell you about this year's Cambridge Martin Luther King Day of Service. This is the ninth year that Cambridge will join hundreds of cities around the country in honoring Dr. Martin Luther King by making MLK Day a day of service to the community. We come together to answer Dr. King's challenge: What are you doing for others? MLK Day of Service has 59 community partners, including the Community -- sorry, Cambridge Community Foundation, the YWCA, the Cambridge Arts Council, Cambridge Police, Whole Foods Market, Central Square Business Association, among many other area businesses and nonprofits and city departments. The past two years, more than 3,000 volunteers, and we'll have 3,000 more this year, have come to Central Square and worked for three hours to make gifts and sort donations that touch the lives of thousands of Cambridge residents. We know many of you came last year or the year before to volunteer, but for those who couldn't be here, Leslie Bliss will give you a sense of what it felt like.
Hi, I'm Leslie Bliss. Last year, 3,200 volunteers made 3,545 Valentines for isolated elders and veterans, 661 fleece scarves and blankets for homeless children, teens, and adults, 2,319 activity kits for children waiting in emergency rooms. And they collected and sorted 402 bags of food for 16 Cambridge food pantries and meal programs, 83 bags of children's books for literacy programs, 1,347 pounds of winter clothing for homeless children, teens, and adults, and 1,717 bags of donated travel toiletries for homeless teens and adults. More volunteers delivered all of these gifts and supplies to more than 10,000 people helped by 84 nonprofits and agencies working in Cambridge and Somerville. In addition, volunteers hand-delivered more than 500 of the Valentines to isolated elders in Cambridge. Now, Lori Lander will tell you about this year's MLK Day of Service and the plans for an entire day of events honoring Dr. Martin Luther King.
Hi, I'm Lori Lander. This year's the Ninth Annual MLK Day of Service is next Monday, January 21, 2019. We will begin with a welcome gathering on the steps of City Hall with words of greeting for the day from Mayor McGovern, Reverend Ellis Washington from St. Paul AME Church, and Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley. Two recent Berkeley School of Music graduates from Kenya, Jason and Jacob Sebi Okumu, will lead us in song. Then volunteers will spread out to five Central Square locations. We take over all of City Hall, thank you very much. This room becomes transformed into a room making blankets and scarves for every homeless child, teen, and adult in Cambridge. We take over the senior center as well, the YWCA, St. Peter's Episcopal Church Undercroft, and the Possifield Project. People will be working on seven different projects, making and sorting gifts and useful items that will get distributed to almost 12,000 people in need in Cambridge, Somerville, and neighboring communities. We have three requests for you tonight specifically. First, we hope you'll all come join us on the steps of City Hall at the welcome gathering at 2:00. It will be brief because it will be cold, so the hope is that it will be about 15 minutes. Second, we hope you'll come volunteer at one of the five Central Square locations between 2:00 and 5:00, sort food, make a Valentine, design a blanket, or help make deliveries at the end of the day. Third, we hope you'll get the word out to people on your email lists or Twitter, or however you're communicating to people in the city, urging them to come out and lend their helping hands in service of those in need of our -- in need in our community. So, we thank you very much for the city's support, for your personal support, and we hope you'll come out to honor Dr. Martin Luther King's question: What are you doing for others?
Thank you. And Lori, just thank you so much for -- this has grown so tremendously over the nine years, and you've been spearheading this all along, so --
We've been at our beginning.
With a lot of help, thank you. With a lot of help, but --
Vice Mayor Deveraux.
Yeah.
And Counselor Mellon will be here, as always, sewing blankets as well.
Yeah.
So, thank you all.
But take the credit where it's due. This started because of you, so. All right, so now we move to George Schnelock.
Hi, George Schnelock, 81 School Street, Apartment 1 in Somerville, Policy Order Number Four. A few days ago, a certain conservative Boston Globe op-ed contributor was asked on TV about his opinion on protected bike lanes. He said that cities should not carve out spaces in busy urban streets for bikes. On Webster Street, you can see that the city of Cambridge shares this opinion. There is so little space for parking on this street that cars and trucks often park on the sidewalk. This street is also used by the 85 and CT-2 buses. You only need to take one of these buses to Union Square to feel how cramped the current street layout is on the Cambridge side. Somerville cleared all parking from Prospect Street and -- from Prospect Street to Cambridge and built its protected bike lane a couple months ago. At a meeting announcing this, the mayor of Somerville described yet another serious bike crash that happened just that morning as a reason Somerville needed to act urgently. There is no evidence that Cambridge will act similarly. Webster Ave. is not even in its bike plan. Instead of planning to keep two lanes of parking, Cambridge should extend Somerville's protected bike lanes to Cambridge Street, which is also planned to get protected infrastructure. When voting on this policy order, the city council should ask itself: Does it side with a conservative columnist here? Does it want to encourage all the new people who will soon move into the neighborhood to bring their cars? The city council should vote to urge the city to remove the parking and build a protected bike lane there so that people will bike from Somerville to Cambridge without being tempted to just call an Uber instead. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I neglected to say that when you come up, please give your name, your address, and the issue you're speaking on as well. Tom Lamar?
Tom Lamar, 626 Adma Street, Somerville. I'm also vice chair of the Somerville Bike Committee, and I wanted to add a little context about the history of Somerville's portion of Webster Ave. So, for years, several residents on Webster Ave. had been worried about -- had a number of safety concerns on Webster Ave., about no safe facilities for people biking, about cars not yielding to people at crosswalks, and so on. And so, the Somerville Bike Committee worked with residents along their -- along Somerville's section to understand their concerns and help put together a plan for a safer street for everybody. And we're very pleased that this fall, the city of Somerville took a number of steps to implement that. So, so far, flex posts have been installed. Due to how late it was in the year, the city wasn't able to paint Webster Ave. at the same time. But coming up in the spring, the city of Somerville is planning to improve upon the existing facilities with green conflict markings, improved sort of virtual bumps out at crosswalks, and so on. And we're really looking forwards to Cambridge building a complete section -- a complete street along their section as well, providing a safe connection to Cambridge Street, to Columbia, to Windsor, and other roads that are either slated for separated bike infrastructure or sufficiently calmed, safe, low-traffic streets. We love biking into Cambridge. We want everybody in Somerville to be safe in biking into Cambridge and vice versa. Webster Ave. is a vital connection between our two cities, so we look forwards to seeing it becoming safer for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Holderness?
Hi, my name is Julia Holderness, and I live at 130 Brattle Street. I'd like to follow up on my previous remarks from last week about the flood caused by the Craigie Street water main break. I guess it's Policy Order Number 17 today. I hope council members have seen the pictures I sent you of the flood and its aftermath. Please bear in mind that my neighbors and I were not taking pictures at the height of the flood, so they reflect later stages of the catastrophe, once the water had receded by at least two feet. We had more immediate concerns. For example, my husband, Darius, and I had to drive our cars to safety. I think there were eight cars totaled in that flood. Stepping out into the water was terrifying as the fierce current pulled me backward. I was afraid that my car would be swept away, and although fortunately it wasn't, several inches did seep in as I drove forward. I had to drive for blocks to get out of the flood. The icy water went down my boots as I sloshed back home. At that point, I had no idea that the flood had filled my basement waist-high with what flood remediators call category-three water. This is the most contaminated kind of water, and this was two days before Christmas. We have two young children, Sarush, nine, and Charzad, eight. Our basement and then our front yard was filled with ruined possessions. We had no heat or running water for two weeks. We had to huddle around space heaters with blankets piled on us. How are parents supposed to reassure their kids that all is well when it is not? In the wake of the flood, I suffered nightmares. In one, I'm driving my kids across a bridge when a massive tidal wave sweeps over our car. I'm terrified that our car will in turn be swept off the bridge and into the roiling waters. There is no escape. When and where will the next break occur? In one way, we were lucky. The break occurred in the wee hours of the morning. Is it lost on anybody that Craigie Street borders a school? I drive along Craigie every morning at rush hour, and it's always jammed with young families. What if the next time, a geyser erupts directly under somebody's car? Government is supposed to keep citizens safe. The first responders who came that morning were heroic, but infrastructure is part of the picture. Water mains are designed to give us clean and reliable water. Infrastructure is supposed to improve our lives, not make them worse. On December 23, it made them worse. The toll is eight basements, seven cars, I believe, and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I myself lost a family heirloom that I'd planned to share one day with a museum. I happen to be a descendant of Davy Crockett and have inherited some of his things. Most have already made their way into museums like the Smithsonian in Washington, but we still had his personal copy of his autobiography stored in our basement. It was fragile already, but now it is soiled, and the personal inscriptions in it have been washed away. How does the city plan to make this right for me and my neighbors? Thank you.
Thank you. Darius Vexori?
That's my husband. He's running late.
Alan Dorsky? Oh, wait. Oh, sorry.
My name is Alan Dorsky. For 51 years, I've lived at Eight Mercer Circle. Currently, I'm living in a hotel, camping out. I expect that to last, could be a month. There are three items that I want to touch on very quickly. First, I wanted to ask maybe -- it's well-known by other people. How did the fire department learn of the break on Craigie Street on just two days before Christmas? Number two, committee to me, I guess, back in November 3, 2014, sponsored a policy order, which I would ask to be modified, as you'll hear in a moment. At that time, the council unanimously adopted a policy order for the city manager -- oh, sorry -- to confer with the managing director of the water department on whether the department is monitoring aged pipelines to prevent unexpected breaks. The phrase that I would like to be added to that resolution is to also ask that the department -- how the department is executing the monitoring process. It's not enough just to say that they are monitoring it. I think we need to know exactly how they're doing it so we can understand how reliable and reassuring that is, that another break won't occur in a week, or a month, or two, or three, or four years. And finally, I wanted to comment on how professional the fire department was in coming to my assistance. I was alone in the house, and I heard pounding and saw lights, and I thought it was a fire up at the corner of Brattle and Mercer Circle. And suddenly, a fireman appeared in my bedroom on the second floor. Had my wife been with me, she would have freaked out to have a strange man come into our bedroom at 5:45 in the morning. But they told me I had to gather my medicines and my clothing, and I'd have to leave. And then on the way out, they were very helpful in strapping me into a chair and carrying me out over the water. I should add that the way the fireman got into the house is he put up -- he was very resourceful. He put a ladder up to the second floor and ripped open the screen. Fortunately, we were very lucky, the window was not locked, so we was able to raise the window and climb into our office on the second floor. And fortunately, I had a relative nearby who was able to pick me up with her car above the water level. But the measure of how much water we got in our basement, the water came up to the my wife's nose. We measured that my wife's nose above the floor level. It was five feet. So, we had five feet of water in our basement. We lost two cars, and others also have lost a great deal. So, thank you for considering this modification to indicate how the water system is being monitored. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we had a little -- Suzanne, we had a little mess-up in the -- Ari Offsevitt was actually next, and then you disappeared, and Suzanne popped up. So, Ari, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking to Policy Order Number Five about the Neighborhood and Long-Term Planning Committee in Transit X. My name is Ari Offsevitt. I live at 10 Lawrence Street. I'm a board member of Transit Matters. I'm also a graduate student at MIT. I'm studying transportation engineering and urban planning. I know that the threshold for holding hearing is relatively low, as it should be, but there should be a threshold, and I believe that Transit X does not meet this threshold. We elect city councilors to make important decisions and use their time wisely to advance the priorities of the city, and it should be clear really to anyone who's looked at this proposal that Transit X is not a good use of city resources. What this is is really nothing new or innovative, despite the fact that they say it is. It's the latest iteration of something which we've really seen -- never seen much success outside of maybe a single track in Morgantown, West Virginia, although I've been there, and it is a large concrete structure, which we would not have room for here in Cambridge, and a few airports here and there, and these are major capital and concrete-intensive projects. This supposed prototype is little more than a plastic bubble suspended from a steel track and a warehouse in Lemonster. It seems very much like the steel bubbles I rode in Wildcat Mountain in the '90s, and they were on their last legs then, and they were replaced with something that worked a little better, but it's not really urban transportation. Transit X has not really thought through any plans, lack any emergency egress. The stations are little more than stairways up to the track, which I doubt meets the needs for people with mobility needs and ADA requirements. Their handbooks actually describe that the paws will swoop down to the ground, pick people up at curb level, and then swoop back up, which would mean that it would be very dangerous for anyone who might be walking around and get clunked in the side of a head. It's kind of all nonsense. In addition to people getting hit by cars in the street, we now have to be worried about them getting hit in the head by above. The council should vet these proposals pretty carefully, and their backers as well, and it should be more fully before spending time on this because it seems pretty frivolous. Let's talk about the real transit issues that we have and solutions. Let's talk about bus lanes on Mass Ave. and other places in the city. Let's talk about Webster Street, as people were talking about earlier. Let's talk about safe bicycling in the city. Let's talk about how we use the corridors that we have to move more people in and out of the city with cars with things that are proven to work. Let's focus on what might actually be feasible improvement, not an idea that has been pushed for years and that not even built anyway. To say that this idea is half-baked would be to give it too much credit. It's like taking the butter out of the freezer and declaring that the cookies are ready. Let's at least see if they can cream the butter and sugar before we spend much time. In the famous Simpsons monorail episode, the swindler Lyle Landley mentioned that he had sold monorails to Ogdenville, Brockway, and North Haverbrook. While that product may have been shoddy, it at least existed. In this case, we haven't even gotten that far. Let's not get swindled, and let's focus on things that might actually work.
Thank you. Ari, if you want to email those, your comments to the clerk.
Okay, counsel.
The record. There's a card. Grab the card right there on the table. Suzanne, followed by Mary Lee Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor McGovern. Counselors, my name is Suzanne Blier, 5 Fuller Place. There are a lot of items on the agenda tonight that are important, from vacant storefronts to evictions, transit, bike lanes, water, breaks, infrastructure, but I want to focus on two. One is the kiosk, and I support the city manager's report number one and the decision to renew the lease of the current occupants, and I would urge you, as city councilors, also to help us make sure that the plans for the kiosk are ones that we all support and will actually -- the kiosk are ones that we all support and will actually transform this important part of the city. The citizens have put in hundreds, if not thousands, of hours to create a bold, creative design. We need water, air conditioning, heat in there if it's going to be functioning year-round. The second issue I want to address is the city manager's item number six on the overlay and envision. And simply to say that I support urban planning, I teach it. And when one is teaching urban planning, one emphasizes the importance of a plan, drawing up and getting approval for a plan, and gaining buy-in for it before one moves forward with questions of zoning. In the way it is now, where we're pushing zoning before the plan, it's like putting the back of the horse before the horse front and the cart. I'm hoping, as of other citizens, that envision would in fact provide us with a viable plan going forward for the city now and into the future. It's critical. Right now, there are competing interests between environment and overdevelopment, and it's important that we bring these various interests together. And as we saw in the event on Saturday, many of the citizens of Cambridge in the various neighborhood associations are deeply committed to these other concerns. Finally, I think what Robert Winters pointed out today, or yesterday, on this, is that in many respects today, what is happening in pushing for CDD to go out and advertise this in the neighborhoods is that, again, it is not providing what the citizens want, which is for the city council and the city itself to listen to what current residents of the city want. Thank you.
Thank you. And you've already sent those in. I saw them earlier. Merrily Meyer, followed by Caroline James.
Hi, Merrily Meyer, 10 Dana Street. And I too am speaking on the manager's agenda, number one and number six, and I too support the short-term lease of the kiosk to the out-of-town news while plans for the plaza move forward and are being presented to the public January 31. And where the public can presumably have input on the kiosk's historic preservation, transformation, and new use, which I hope will include, as mentioned, air conditioning, water, news, history, and tourism as part of the programming. Continued leasing also keeps another storefront from going dark at this crucial location. Maintaining a tenant is also important, as the city reexamines the goals of envision in its broader context, and how neighborhoods and residents understand smart growth context, environmental consequences, and building by right, or what that means. We need to look at zoning prior to getting envision implemented and before details are voted on, in theory. As you know, the devil's in the details, and with all due respect, number 10 reminds me of advertising campaign for the 100% overlay idea that CDD has already decided on while residents still are asking for clarification. Envision has another run on the target, January 17, in Cambridge Port, but will it actually change in its description? This needs to be further, this needs further explanation, and the council and manager know it. It will have unintended consequences and as presented for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline James, followed by David Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor McGovern and council, and thank you for this new monitor. Right? Okay, so I would like to touch upon a few of the agenda's items, because they're very interesting. So thank you for all these. I support city manager's agenda number one. That's fantastic. We need a little more time to iron out, make sure that the process is inclusionary and participatory as possible for the Harvard Square Kiosk Plaza. For example, to get into the weeds a bit, the meeting promised about reviewing the design and meeting with the consultants that was promised to us is being hosted 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. This means that no one who works 9:00 to 5:00 will be able to be attending the heart of the matter. So we've asked CDD to please make it accessible. Also, caregivers deliver some older folks who cannot get there on their own, and they are under the impression that it's a 6:00 p.m. start time like every other meeting has been. So this is an anomaly. Secondly, I won't go in order, because I'm just going to look where I highlighted. I really love the handwritten note on 3.1A, "Examples of spaces in Cambridge should be creatively funded." Could I talk about this?
Where is that, on the agenda?
Example 3A, 1A, it's about the use of public percentage for art ordinance, and it's for public.
What?
It's, there's 19-4. Oh, what's that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So I love this, because it's a handwritten note talking about creatively funded public spaces. And Harvard Square Kiosk Plaza sorely needs some creative juices. This is something that we can do together. It doesn't have any creative juices. Oh, am I okay to talk about this?
Paula, you cannot talk about communications or awaiting reports. Anything else?
So is there anything about, I think there's, I just want to clarify, because I don't want my time right now to be diminished.
Yeah, we'll give you some time.
Thank you.
The arts, yeah.
Kiosk Plaza?
Okay. So you signed up to speak on a communication, and that you cannot?
Kiosk Plaza?
City manager, and item number one is fine. What's the other thing you?
So I can talk about the kiosk plaza?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So how much time do I have left?
Glad. We'll give you another minute.
Thank you so much. So for the past year and a half, the design, the landscape architect who was hired through House Doctor, was supposed to work with the newly hired Toluqian-Toluqian, because TGAS was dismissed from the project, okay? This is important, because they were supposed to collaborate, but the design has not changed in a year and a half. This means, as urban planners, I'm an architect associate or AIA to be, this means that they're not talking to one another, and that needs to be, that link needs to be made, because, you know what? The architects have great ideas about the plaza, and the principal in charge of, at Halversen, said, "If I could dream, it would replace the MBTA headhouse." And that's so essential. Safe way to bring power across sidewalks. Is this, is this a scooter?
Nope.
It's a, it's on here.
Yeah, but it's, it's.
Sorry. I would just, one more thing. This will take five seconds. Jan Deveraux made a wonderful video about the voting system. I would love to make a wonderful video explaining all these terms, because it's not, a lot of people don't know what it means. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hirsch, followed by Melissa Leduke.
I'm Dave Hirsch of Two Mercer Circle. I want to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and all the council members. That's Two Mercer Circle, I think the deeply injured Two Mercer Circle, about which I will speak for just a moment. So I'm a person who has lived in and worked in Cambridge my entire adult life. That makes me about the luckiest person I would imagine. And I've worked for the city hospital, the Cambridge Hospital, for my entire career as a physician. So I was the longest-serving medical director of Cambridge Healthcare for the Homeless, also a delight and joy that I will never forget. So I love Cambridge. I genuinely love the place, and I feel really proud to be a citizen. So as you all, I'm sure, would imagine, it's deeply upsetting and unsettling and quite surprising to experience the city's flood. This feels, it feels quite deeply as a foreseeable catastrophe, and it feels also like a violation of the city's social compact. So I will say this. I'm saddened by the event, and I'm disappointed to date by the response, but I'm also incredibly confident the city will do what's right for its neighborhood. It's what it always does, is we're Cambridge, right? So I feel good about that. And in my experience, Cambridge will uphold its traditions, ensure its social compact, and will make this right. I have confidence in my city's responsible approach to its citizens. I have confidence in its leaders. I feel like as a physician, I should at least make one doctor-like comment, which would be this. I know fractures. We know fractures. And the pipe, it fractured in a very disfiguring way. It really fractured. It pushed cars. It was a torrent. And a fracture like that is scary and devastating, I think. Our houses are gone at chest height or even nose height, apparently, with that much water, and things we love are gone. Two cars for me. But what I think should never be gone, the fracture that I worry most about would be a fracture between this great city and its great leaders and its community. That's just not who we are. We heal fractures from this city. We heal the world from this city. So the fracture I think we should try to prevent would of course be future pipes. But the other fracture I think we should try to prevent is the one between government and its people. And I'm absolutely confident that we can do that. I know you will do what's right, so I thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Leduke, followed by Charles Franklin.
Hi, thank you. I'm Melissa Leduke. I live at 30 Buena Vista Park in Cambridge, and I'm here tonight to speak to policy order eight, has to do with the Cambridge Community Electricity Program. And I want to first say thank you to the four councilors who are sponsoring this policy order. They knew who they are, but Zondervan, Deveraux, Mallon, and Siddiqui. I want to speak more broadly. First of all, I want to say thank you for looking ahead, as a city, at the next iteration of this program. I wish it were happening now, but I want to speak to applaud the energy efficiency plan for low-income tenants and owners that's part of this new iteration that we'll be looking forward to in two years. One of the things, and I'm speaking as myself, as an individual, although I'm wearing my shirt from others out front, of which I am a proud member in this city, and we have been very involved, as I think many of you know, in trying to do the best we can to try to get our city to the highest renewables that's possible for all of us in this community. But we also really want to applaud the equitable and fairness of whatever plan is put in place. I do want to speak tonight to one thing that I'm constantly asking the question of and still haven't gotten the answer to, and I want to put you at the scene, because Mothers Out Front has gone door-to-door and tried to get people in this last iteration to go up to 100%. And I think you know, as both a city and an organization, I would say that we failed in doing what we needed to do to make that happen, with only 620 households over the course of two years going to the 100% option, whereas when we walk around door-to-door, we find that people are extremely interested in this, they just didn't know about it. So I just want to pose this as us knocking on a door in the near future and trying to explain the plan as it moves forward into its new iteration with many, much more emphasis on building solar arrays. So imagine if we knock on the door and suggest to people about this program and are trying to explain it, and the people ask us, "Well, okay, so we're going to build solar arrays. You've kind of explained how we're going to do it, but let's see. How soon are we going to get to 100% renewable energy with this plan, as opposed to what we were doing before?" Right now, we can't answer that question for them. We would have to say, "We'll get back to you." We don't know the answer. We want to know the answer. I believe we should know that answer, and I do think it's incumbent on the city to give us that answer. Newton now knows that if you're in a household there, you're getting 60% of your energy from renewables. We don't know that. When in this city are our households and small businesses going to get 60% of their energy through renewables, through the solar arrays? I think we should know that. I think it's possible to know, and I really hope that you will press for this information to make it transparent. I will just note that we were supposed to be at 100% with municipals by 2018. We've missed that mark. Let's not miss the next one.
Thank you, Melissa. If you can leave your comments or email them to the clerk. All right, well, very, very impressive for off the top of your head. Charles Franklin, followed by Trudy Goodman.
Hello, Charles Franklin, 162 Hampshire Street. Happy Monday, everyone. Okay. I think we really need to start getting on the offensive when it comes to the empty and misused storefronts across the city. Landlords are kicking out viable businesses and leaving their storefronts empty because they want it free for when a higher payer comes by. Some landlords won't even respond to reasonable business plans. Many people have reached out to the owners of what was Sandy's Market in Eamon Square, for example, and have gotten no responses. Others are cannibalizing our social centers by, with putting in private offices on first floors in the center of squares. This may be an extreme position, but I think we should disallow private offices in first-floor retail spaces and impose a fee for storefronts left vacant for longer than a period of time that doubles each month, which can be waived with a one-year lease signed with a local business. In terms of transit, I knew we had a lot of congestion, but I didn't know we were in the top 10 worst. The Transit X project seems interesting and is probably worth investigating. However, I do have some reservations. Their transit pods are smaller than cars, and the rails have less capacity than a traditional street, but maybe there's something I don't understand about that type of infrastructure. I'm not that kind of engineer. Honestly, though, the thing that concerns me the most is the really poor CGI on their demo video. And while that may sound funny, I don't see how they can install a citywide transit system if they can't even render a decent-looking video. I mean, it looks really stupid. I personally don't like buses, but I think we should focus on having more priority bus lanes and also investigate other traditional systems parallel to the MBTA that might be a better fit for Cambridge. The other thing I like about priority bus lanes is that it could perhaps lay the tracks, if you will, for potentially having streetcars again after GM ripped out all the streetcar rails and all across the country. If you don't believe it, look it up. It's a real conspiracy. They really did. They got in a suit and lost also. And I support the order to revamp the Memorial Tree Program, and I think it should be mandatory for the Harvard Divinity School to attend the committee hearing. For those of you who don't know, they want to cut down a 100-year-old oak and replace it with something asinine. I don't even want to go into what they're going to do. And I don't really understand Order Eight. I didn't really spend that much time reading or thinking about it, but perhaps the city could subsidize installation of solar panels on people's roofs, or maybe just pay for them for buildings that are particularly apt for installing solar. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Trudy Goodman, followed by Tina Alu.
Can you, for goodness sakes, there you know. Think I know how to do it, I'm an actor. So I'm just wondering if there are any inclusionary tenants here this evening?
You got to direct your comments up here, Trudy.
Okay. I hope I'm not the only one here. So I'm responding to Agenda Item Five. It's about inclusionary issues for inclusionary tenants, and I'm sitting on the inclusionary list. And I'm currently having to submit a letter, which I have, to CDD requesting accommodations for my disability. I have been shown two units that were inadequate, one that was supposedly an ADA unit for someone with a disability, and I can tell I used to take care of quadriplegics and paraplegics. It did not meet any of the specs for an ADA unit. My concerns are the following. And I've lived in Cambridge almost 40 years. My father had a hardware store here. I love this place. I don't want to have to leave Cambridge. Okay, I'm a Section 8 tenant. I work, many Section 8 tenants do, and the ones that don't are usually looking for work. So I'm a disabled person. The realities are, I have to leave the housing that I'm in, but I need to be shown decent housing to move into. The two units that I've been shown have not been decent housing. Generally, it is my feeling right now that there is such a push for a need for housing, which is quite honestly true, for affordable housing for all kinds of people, that the CDT, CDD on some level is panicking. And what's happening is they're kind of throwing mud at a wall, hoping it will stick. I have been shown two units that were inadequate for my needs as a person with disabilities, one which was totally inappropriate, as I said. I am not in a wheelchair. I am not have mobility issues. However, that unit purported to be a disabled unit was not. My concerns are about the fact that developers are supposed to be coming forth with these inclusionary units. And by the way, it's wonderful. I want to say it's wonderful that this program... I want to say it's wonderful that this program exists because without it, I wouldn't have any assistance to find any decent housing. However, I really feel that the developers and the inclusionary program need to step up in a way to really look at these units. My feeling is they're not going in and actually looking at the units before they're showing it to potential tenants like me. The other issue I have with this is, I really don't, I lived for almost 14 years in East Cambridge. I don't think that it's fair that only two sections of the city down near Leech Neare and near East Cambridge and up near Alewife, near North Cambridge, are having to bear the brunt of inclusionary housing. It should be citywide, and all of the neighborhoods should step up. We've got neighborhood associations here that can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy. Tina Alu, followed by Heather Hoffman.
Hello. I'm here tonight to speak to policy order number one regarding compiling a report outlining how the prolonged federal shutdown is going to impact people of Cambridge. I'm sure, as you do every day, we get another email telling us another piece of bad news of what things are going to be impacted as this shutdown goes on and on and on. In addition to getting the emails, we get increased calls every day of people panicking. What is it going to mean for their food stamps? What is it going to mean for their tax refunds? We don't have a lot of answers, but we try to reassure people as much as we can. And I thought tonight I would just share with the people that are watching this broadcast to give them a little bit of information of what we know. We just found out today that people's SNAP benefits for February will be loaded on their EBT cards early, between the 17th and the 20th of this month. Hopefully, by having it in advance as things move on, at least people will have benefits for February. As I've been saying, I don't want to be in Market Baskin in line on March 1st if this doesn't end as people are trying to buy food for their families and go to swipe their EBT card and there's no funding on it. The second area that people calling us and really panicking is about their tax refund. For a lot of people, they hate this time of year. People hate taxes. Not the people that come to us for our free tax preparation services. They've been calling us since Thanksgiving trying to make an appointment to get their taxes done. We're hearing from the IRS that the tax season will not be delayed and returns will be processed starting January 28th, and that refunds will not be delayed. I find that a little bit hard to believe, but I'm hoping that that's the case. But CEOC and the other tax preparation programs in the area will be starting their tax preparation on time. And lastly, CEOC is going to work with the food pantry networks to make sure that we are trying to increase the amount of food that we're providing for people who are impacted, whether that means increasing the amount of food that someone gets at a visit to the pantry or increasing the number of times that someone can come in a month to make sure that they're able to have additional food if other things are cut for them. In addition, CEOC is going to be extending its food pantry hours on Monday evenings to provide a few extra hours for people to be able to come to get food. And in closing, just, I know none of us know, but we just want to let you know that we are happy to partner with you in any way that we can get out this information as you put together the report to the people that we serve, the low-income community and immigrants in the city. We're happy to partner with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina, for the information and for what you do every day.
Hello, Heather Hoffman, 213 Hurley Street. And I agree, it was good to hear that. And I also share the skepticism about the IRS. I wanted to touch for one moment on the kiosk to say that this is actually a case where diminution of process is appropriate. As many of you know, the city has been way too eager to not talk about big things and just give stuff away in the past. But this seems like exactly the kind of thing that diminution of process was made for. So I support it. There are a bunch of items that have to do with people losing their homes in this agenda. And that's what I wanted to spend the rest of my time on, especially with respect to gathering data. Yes, absolutely, we should do that. We can have no good idea of how to keep people in their homes and get people who don't have homes into homes if we don't know how they lose them. And in this regard, I have a book to recommend. It's possible that I'm the last person in the room to have found out about this book. But in case that's not true, I would recommend Evicted by Matthew Desmond, who happens to teach at a nearby institution of higher education. And he actually did a study to find out this kind of information. And in fact, the information, his data and everything else are available online. He says where to find it at the end of the book. So I strongly urge people to look at that because, as we've seen tonight, there are ways that we haven't thought of that people get evicted. For example, their homes get flooded. This morning, a whole lot of people found themselves homeless because of a fire. Those, I mean, you're just as homeless in those situations. People who don't get their tax refunds become homeless. People who don't get their food stamps, all of the things that CEOC was talking about. These are all reasons that people become homeless. And people who are not offered proper housing, as a previous speaker mentioned, that's another reason that people become homeless. And additionally, people who are mistreated by their landlords and can no longer stand to live there also become homeless. I hope that all of these are studied because this is information that we really, truly need, and then we need to act on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Daryush, did you show up? Is your address and the issue you're speaking on, please?
Yes, my name is Daryush Fakhshuri. I'm at 130 Brattle Street. So this is in regard to the Water Infrastructure Bill. We have been affected by the Craigue Main Water Break on December 23rd. Our yard is observable from Brattle Street. And by now, I have flown the habit of observing how long it would take for pedestrians to turn their neck to look at a pile of furniture and appliances decorating our garden. Here are some rules I have learned while founding three successful startup companies in Massachusetts. The last one is Freshbend over here. One, things that are measured are improved. Two, things that do not have consequences are not improved. How do we measure consequences of the main water pipe break? As far as I can tell, there is no such measure. There is no such process of scoping, follow-ups, and accountability. Avoiding litigation is not a process. The hard-working first responders saw our basement and the full scope of the damage. Yet the city representatives were all surprised at the scope of the damage. In the early confusion, two private flood remediation companies were trying to sign us up. I would have loved to have somebody from the city to advise us. This is my conclusion. There is no process for advising, scoping, managing, and owning the damage caused by the city main water break. Without this process in place, we cannot measure what we would like to improve. Two, what are the consequences to the city? If insurance accepts the damaged claims, does it mean there was no consequence? Somebody is still paying for the damages. It would be higher insurance premiums. It would be the $10,000 insurance deductibles. It would be the underpayments by insurance companies. And it would be the insurance companies coming after the city, us, the taxpayer, and you guys for recouping their payment. Relying on episodic litigation or dragging the feet to exhaust the injured citizens are not a healthy process. I don't expect it from Cambridge. Escaping the consequences of this failure by avoiding accountability is not consistent with the culture and sense of community that Cambridge represents. The process of policymaking by reaction does not feed the spirit of Cambridge. I have found residents of Cambridge to be compassionate, and the covenant between the resident and the representative should reflect this. The only way the city would change its failed policy is to share in a tangible way in the pain of its citizens. I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation with the city council.
Could you please leave your comments in the basket for the city clerk? So that is the end of folks who have signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who has not signed up who would like to speak on an issue on tonight's agenda? Peter, I saw you first, and then we'll go here.
We're all here tonight, Peter Valentine, 37 Brookline. We're all here tonight because our minds have gotten us here. Our minds are very powerful. If the people of the nation use their minds to send positive energy down to where that problem is at the bottom of the nation, it would be solved, okay? But you won't do that because you live on a physical level and not on a multi-dimensional level.
Thank you, Peter. Come on up. Name, address, and the issue you're speaking on, please.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Hodeline, and I live at 132 Brattle Street, which is the corner of Mercer Circle. And I was here last week thanks to the public order placed by Vice Mayor Devereaux. And I'm here tonight because Counselor Toomey has also put in an order. And I very much appreciate their actions because if it weren't for them, I really do feel that our neighborhood would be totally neglected by the city. Last week, there was some surprise when all of us trooped up and said that nobody from the city had contacted us after the heroic first responders left. Well, the astonishment continues. No one from the city has contacted us. I understand that the city feels that they have no financial responsibility for this disaster that hit our community. And maybe that is true. But it seems to me going forward, as you look at the infrastructure at Cambridge, if you do not find out how devastating this flood was to our little neighborhood, you cannot do an effective cost-benefit analysis when you look at these pipes. As was pointed out last week, the pipe that broke was put in in 1867 and had not been serviced, I think, since the early 1950s. It's easy for the city if you can walk away from the cost. It's not easy for us. As you heard today, the Dworskis are still in a hotel. They've lived in their home for 51 years, and they're going to be out for over a month. We were fortunate at my house because we did not lose heat and hot water. Six of our neighbors did right before Christmas. We're all so lucky because we are insured. But that's unusual. And I would hazard a guess that most people in this room would not be insured because if you have regular homeowner's insurance and you have a flood, even if it's a man-made flood, you are not covered. So again, I thank the councilors for putting this order in. I hope it will get a serious consideration and that the residents will be consulted as you go forward because what happened to us could happen to any neighborhood in Cambridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Aubrey, come up.
Aubrey Berkowitz, 632 Massachusetts Avenue, apartment 404. Thank you, Honorable Mayor McGovern, Vice Mayor Devereaux, and city councilors. I'm just here to speak on a few different orders. So first, the City Manager Agenda Item Number One, Five, and Six, and then Policy Orders Two, Four, Six, and Eight. I'm just going to emphasize that for Manager Agenda Item Number One, I was actually on the Harvard Kiosk Working Group, which was really great. And it's taken a long time to get to where we are today. And there's still going to be a lot of steps before we actually are able to use the structure for what we all decided would be a great purpose, which is using it as like a flexible, inclusive, vibrant space. But right now, we still need a tenant. We still need to have some life in the structure itself. So I definitely support making it easier to lease and then re-lease the kiosk to out-of-town news. For the Manager Agenda Item regarding Envision, people are so caught up in those three scenarios, the two about housing, super-inclusionary, and the overlay, and the item about the kind of net zero, about sustainability relating to buildings. I think they're really important. But like the Agenda Item discusses, there's 175 other suggestions. 175, and we're talking about three. We absolutely need to talk about more. The impacts for a lot of these are massive, whether we're talking about increasing density and height along corridors. I support that for housing. But there are proposals to increase density for commercial, too. So what are the positive and negative reverberations on our city, whether it be related to cost of living, traffic, tax base, et cetera? Those are massive, and we're not talking about them. So I think it's really important to, and I very much so support, expanding the discussion of Envision to somehow talk about maybe not 175 suggestions, but more than three. I also support the Agenda Item related to inclusionary. There are certainly, from what I've heard, potentials for bias there, and many of which is not intended. But we really need to talk to folks, again, of all abilities. We need to talk to folks with kids. We need to talk to folks with different ages, from different buildings, who pay, you know, I don't know, who are within the 60% of the AMI, who are at 30% of the AMI. How is that impacting the different incomes of inclusionary tenants? And I think even beyond that, we need to consider that inclusionary tenants are oftentimes permanent tenants. So there might be a kid who goes to MIT and is renting at market rate, which is great, but he might only be there for a couple of years, right? But inclusionary tenants might plan to be there for a lifetime. So what does that mean in terms of, you know, location of or size of the unit? Location of the unit? Are there micro appliances, which apparently are currently planned for buildings like Mass and Main in Proto? Can someone live with just a microwave for 30 years? So there's a lot we need to work into that discussion. And so I really support this investigation, and I look forward to seeing the conversation go forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on an issue on tonight's agenda? Who hasn't signed up?
I'm Sue Wettler.
Hi, Sue.
And I'm looking at your policy orders here. The federal government will have an enormous effect on our city, right?
Absolutely.
And what you're doing is profoundly regressive. So for this city to be independent in its thinking and goal-setting and character from the pathology that we're seeing in the federal government has my unmitigated endorsement. The climate issues and the way that the federal government is regressing on them is pathetic. I go to climate.gov, I go to energiesaver.gov, I go to energegov, and they're all shut down because of federal funding being cut. I've depended on those websites for useful, valid information. And even if they're restored, I don't know that it won't be corrupted information that I can't trust. Every single policy order on this agenda should be about trees because they're the one thing that can save us. And it's obviously not. You've got to protect trees. If you don't, it is the forerunner to the collapse of every civilization that has failed in the book Collapse by Jared Diamond. So take care of our trees. Thank you for being independent.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an issue on tonight's agenda? Seeing none on a motion by Vice Mayor Devereaux to close public comment. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and public comment is closed. We move to reconsiderations. There are none. We now move to the City Manager's Agenda on a motion by Vice Mayor Devereaux to bring forward the City Manager's Agenda for discussion and adoption. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Pleasure of the council. Counselor Siddiqui.
Thank you. Number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Mallon.
Number eight, please.
Pleasure of the council. Counselor Zander Van.
The Mothers One, Three, Four, and Six, please.
Numbers one, three, four, and six, please.
One, three, four.
Sorry, I meant two, three, four, and six.
Two, three, four, and six. Pleasure of the council. On the balance.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, number five.
Five. No, Quentin changed it. So on city manager agenda item number one, which is the only thing not pulled, the question comes on adopting the order. Order 1A and 1B, roll call on both items, please. We need, yeah, we need two separate roll calls? Okay, roll call on 1A, please.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deveraux.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Mallon.
Yes.
Counselor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Counselor Simmons. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Mayor McGovern.
Yes.
And agenda item number one, A, is adopted on the affirmative vote with eight in favor, one recorded as absent. Agenda item number one, B, Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deveraux.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Mallon.
Yes.
Counselor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Mayor McGovern.
Yes.
And agenda item number one, B, is adopted on the affirmative vote with eight in favor, one recorded as absent.
Before we go to city manager agenda item number two, I've asked the manager and Acting Chief Mahoney to, and Deputy City Manager Peterson, to come forward and talk about today's fire, and to update the council and the community on supports that are in place, and sort of where we stand now with helping the families. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the entire council. About 5:41 this morning, we received, Emergency Communications Center received a 911 call reporting a building fire at 6 Hunting Street. Upon arrival, firefighters encountered a very heavy smoke condition emanating from the top floor of that building. Eventually, four alarms were transmitted. Fire consumed pretty much all of 6 Hunting Street and extended into the building, if you were on Hunting Street, looking at the building, extended into the right, which is a building located at 851 Cambridge Street. As I had stated when speaking to the media on the fire ground earlier today, both of these buildings were quite old. 6 Hunting Street, according to the assessors' database, was built in 1900. The building on Cambridge Street was built in 1873. These buildings have undergone a significant amount of renovations and alterations over the years. The top floor at the building at 6 Hunting Street was actually undergoing some work at this time. These buildings, because of their construction and the various alterations, there's a lot of voids. Fire gets into them, it's very difficult to attack the seed of the, to find and attack the seed of the fire. We unfortunately had over 20 people displaced. I know the city manager will speak about the efforts that have been undertaken to assist those people. The cause of the fire is under investigation by both the Fire Department Fire Investigation Unit and representatives of the State Fire Marshal's Office. As part of the investigation, everybody connected with that building, whether they are a resident, have an ownership interest in the building, will be, has been already or will be interviewed. They'll also be going through various records and reports pertaining to the property. We will have no comment on the cause or origin of the fire. The media keeps inquiring. I actually just got an email a minute ago from the Globe wanting to know if we had a cause yet. It's going to take quite a while to get that. I want to thank the Cambridge Police Department, Emergency Communications, the Water Department, the Electrical Department, DPW, various city agencies that were tremendous assistance to us this morning. And that's pretty much it from a fire department standpoint. And thankfully, we only had one firefighter transported to a hospital for a laceration to his hand. They thought they were going to stitch it. He asked them to glue it instead, and then he says he'll be back to work on his next tour.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you to you, Mr. Mayor. So let me start off with, by 8 o'clock this morning, we had set up a shelter for our residents at the Frizzoli Youth Center. Deputy Chief Ovo was in charge of the shelter, and we had assistance from Human Services, the Health Department, Community Development, Police, Public Works, ISD, and ECC. And from outside agencies, the Cambridge Housing Authority and the Red Cross were there as well, as well as many elected officials. So we were on the scene early, as the fire commissioner said. We had 22 individuals affected. We had all 22 represented. Three were out of state, but we got a hold of them. So all of the information was given to the Red Cross for the 19 that were on-site and for the three who weren't. We were able, by working with Red Cross, to get the individuals $125 debit cards at that meeting, as well as every health staff received $260 debit card for emergency hotel costs. And the Red Cross will stay with this, with each one of these people for 45 days and keep on updating us where we are with housing. I also want to thank the Metro Housing of Boston, who was there, who also helped us with the last fire. Also, we, at the time, due to the fact, really, that we had done this two years ago, we wanted to do right away with what was going on with the mayor's disaster relief fund. And we managed to get all 19 people's information. And as in the guidelines of the mayor's disaster relief fund, we'll be sending out to the 19 people who are here, checks as early as tomorrow morning. They'll be coming to pick up, totaling $11,400. So I really want to thank all the people who participated at the Frizzoli Center. It was, it was the city at its best. But I also want to say, over and above that, that I can't thank the fire department enough. Since I've been the city manager, I've gone to too many fires. But I can tell you, to be the city manager who has a fire department like ours is an incredible honor. When you look how close buildings are to one another in this city, and how so many times they manage to contain it to the one building that's having a fire, it's incredible. The men and women in that department just do incredible, incredible work, and I just can't thank them enough. You know, we talk about equipment, and we do have the best equipment, and we do do great training, but we also have the most dedicated men and women that you could ever imagine. And I just want to personally thank them, as someone who's had to see them in action too many times. I also want to thank our residents. To get everyone who was available in the middle of this to come to the Frizzoli Center, work with us, work with Red Cross, get them all signed up, is a real tribute to them, because what they were going through, I also can't tell you how it made us feel as they were leaving, thanking us. So in the time of what they're going through, they have the time to thank us. And that's what Cambridge is all about. And it was just, again, a great honor to be there today, to help these people in the way they helped us. Also, over and above that, we want to announce that the Mayor Disaster Relief Fund website is back up again. It's www.cambridgema.gov, Mayor's Disaster Relief Fund. So that's up and running. You can also send checks right to the Finance Department, that we will take a look at, at 795 Mass Ave, and just write the checks to the Mayor Disaster Relief Fund. So we will meet again tomorrow internally, the city departments, just so we stay on top of this. As we did at the last fire two years ago, we told the individuals at this fire, today is not a one-day performance with the city. We will stay with them. We will work with them. So we will continue to meet, and then either Friday, Tuesday will be the big group act, which includes the outside agencies to stay on where we are with this. So again, all I want to just say is thank you to everybody who made an impossible situation a whole lot better than it could have been. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just two quick things. I'm not going to mention this young man's name, because I don't know if he wants the publicity or not. But as with the last fire, we had a young person who woke everybody up in the house, got people out of the building. There was some, I guess there were some, the fire alarms in that building went off frequently. And so I talked to a number of people at the Frizzoli that said, I just rolled over and went back to bed, because I just thought it was another false alarm. And thanks to this young man banging on their door and not just running out for his own safety, he was able to get everybody out safely. So that, I wanted to acknowledge that. And also, yes, we have a great fire department here, but I also want to thank Boston, Somerville, Waltham, Watertown, Belmont, I think that's Brookline, who all responded as well to help us. So thank you to those communities. Any questions, Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I happen to live very close to this fire also, and woke up to smoke in the neighborhood. So really appreciate the efforts and glad that we were able to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Pleasure of the council. Counselor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. The panel and the department heads behind me, certainly another unfortunate day, but, you know, Cambridge is certainly there in many, many ways. And the mayor mentioned the young man, I know very well. As the mayor said, a lot of them just thought it was another false alarm, and they weren't responding to it. So thank God, he worked late, he was still sort of up at that hour, and was able to respond effectively. But as the manager mentioned about the residents at the Frizzoli, a couple of individuals offered to cook some home, cook meals for these individuals. So the residents, they really were very responsive to the situation. Incredible, it was only two years last December, we had another tragic fire in the neighborhood, and another one this time. But fortunately, nobody was severely injured or loss of life. And again, the fire department, the men and women, really, you know, every time, you know, I'm on Sixth Street, every time someone goes by, you say a little prayer. But, you know, to be, to contain that fire, and seeing the pictures, that's fire, the smoke, I mean, there's like two feet even there from separating these properties. And to be able to contain that just says an outstanding job that we have, in that the city certainly, thank God, over the years, has invested heavily in public safety, fire police, emergency services, so that we could be prepared in these times of crisis. So, and the mayor was there this morning at the Frizzoli with a lot of others, individuals. I want to thank the mayor and Luis that was there, helping out too. So, but, you know, just a great job in a very unfortunate circumstances. Thank you.
Counselor Mallon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanted to offer my sincerest thanks to the Cambridge Fire Department and all the other departments that responded, as well as the Cambridge Police. I mean, it's crazy to watch that type of fire and know that there are people rushing into those buildings to make sure everyone's safe, and then hours later, know that they're out on the street and freezing cold water, with their feet freezing off. So my sincere thanks to you and to your team. I also wanted to say, as somebody who was at the Berkshire Street fire two years ago at the Frizzoli Center, helping people, to see the city come together this morning, it was like a well-oiled machine. Everyone was there, everyone's on-site, food was there, coffee was there, socks were there. It was amazing. I mean, if you want to be good at something, a disaster response is something to be good at. And I was proud this morning, not only of our first responders, but the city staff, who really made everyone comfortable, welcome, and that they were going to have their problems taken care of. So I just wanted to say thank you. And I know that, Jerry, you've had a long day, 12 hours later, but I just wanted to say thanks.
Pleasure of the council. Counselor Simmons?
Thank you. I just wanted to, it's worth saying twice, Mr. DePiscuali talks about the first responders and all those people that came, but I also have to acknowledge you, Mr. DePiscuali and Ms. Peterson, 8:30, 8:15, they were, they were out there, you know, just kind of being there and being a presence. And I thought that was important. I think it was important to the staff to see that the city leadership was there with them. They didn't pick up a hose, thank goodness, but they were there to show their support. I thought that's very, really important. I said to some of the, I was out there, and I also went over to the Frizzoli, and I said to one of our police officers, who were all also there, you know, if you're going to have to have a tragedy, have it in Cambridge. And I'm not saying we should have tragedies, please. But it was how everything fell into place as if it was just an automatic response. Lee Janetti, all the, I can't think of her name, I see her face, Lynn Tyree, it was like they dropped from the sky, Maura Penzac. It was just so impressive to see, as if they were not called, but on-call. I think that's extraordinary. That doesn't happen everywhere. You know, when you watch other television, when you watch the television, which I try not to these days, and you see other cities and towns that are grappling with trying to make ends meet, and it's almost natural. So I am just truly grateful. I know the folks there were truly grateful. There was a gentleman there, he was quite lovely. He's 83 years old, Mr. Dubinsky. He sort of takes care of the building, and says, you know, and he was a bit shaken. This was his block. And he just sat there and talked about, I moved here 33 years ago, and I've been here in this block for 50 years, and, you know, I tried to force, he said, please have some coffee. He says, no, I'm all right. And just to watch how people came around, and to make sure he was okay. It was, it was, it was a hard time, but it was good and very satisfying to see the level of response that we had to you, chief, to the police department, but particularly to you, Mr. DePiscuali, and your staff, because the staff is, you are the embodiment of your staff. And it is, it is a good staff, because you are a good city manager. I think it's important to say that. And so thank you. Thank you on behalf of the folks that were probably too shaken to say it then, or, you know, may forget to say it several times though, but just thanks very much to doing the job that you did.
Counselor Calhoun?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I join my fellow councilors in thanking you for everything you've done, but I'm thinking of the future now for these people. If it's a burnt-out top floor of a building, I'm guessing that's four to five months, if it's, if it can be salvaged. If not, it's longer. What is the future? How does the city help people in this situation beyond the Red Cross? Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that's why we took all the information, and we'll work with Red Cross. That's why the Metro Housing of Boston was there, they're going to work with us. That's why Community Development was there. That's why the Housing Authority was there. So we will meet pretty much internally every day this week. We will stay in touch with the individuals, we have all the information. The important thing here is to have all the information, we have that. And then we'll probably meet Friday or Tuesday as an update where we are. But as we told everybody, the key is, we will be there, we will help, we will work with them, and hopefully, we can provide housing for all when this is said and done. But we were able to do that two years ago, and that's our goal again this time. Mr. Mayor, through you, well, obviously, that's what we wanted to hear, and thank you for that. When a disaster like this happens, are the victims expected to pay rent, or is there a period of time where the city assists them, or the Housing Authority assists them, given that their lives, and you might not be able to answer this at this moment, given that their lives are in complete disarray? I want to be careful answering that, but, so I really am not sure how that's worked, and it may be worked through the land law. I'm not positive, but we will happy to check that out and get some information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you, chief. We now move on to city manager agenda item number two, a communication transmitted from Louis A. DePiscuali, city manager, relative to awaiting report item number 18-126 regarding the River Street Infrastructure and Street Escape Project. This was pulled by Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for this response. I was very glad to see that separated bike facilities were mentioned in the response, and particularly in connection with the bicycle plan. So I was wondering if you could say a little- bit more about what you're planning. And could this be the first example of permanent separated bike facilities, curb-separated? Are we looking at cycle tracks? What's the thinking here?
Ms. Watkins.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start, and maybe if your honor, Joe, have additions. I mean, I would say that in terms of the first, I mean, there's many options in terms of what the facility looks like. I think when people have talked about River Street, there's very much a vision in terms of the bike facility to match Western Ave in terms of being a raised cycle track and to really provide a high-quality bike facility. I think we mentioned in the response that, you know, there's a lot of goals in terms of this project, in terms of bicycles, pedestrians, transit, street trees, open space. So, there's a lot of different elements of this project. And so, you know, we're really now just starting the community process. And there's, the first committee meeting is scheduled later this month. And we'll really begin that process with the committee, looking at what are all the options, what's the traffic options, what are the open space options, and really going through all those details.
Thank you. In terms of the Carl Baron Plaza, do you have any thoughts about the possibilities there specifically?
I think, again, through you, Mr. Mayor, really, the goal is to sort of have this process. So, you know, staff has in no way sort of predetermined what that outcome should be. I think, you know, when you look at Central Square, it's obviously a key junction point for, you know, pedestrians, cyclists, transit riders, you know, it serves a lot of different functions. And you also want it to be a really successful open space. So, besides sort of identifying all the things we'd like to see accomplished there, we've in no way sort of predetermined what that outcome should be.
Okay. And hopefully, we don't have to remove any trees there to make this project work. Lastly, on the working group, I did see the names on the website. I was wondering if you could explain a little bit the makeup of that group and how you ensured representation.
Sure. On, if you want to.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have a 15-person, excuse me, 15% working group. And that includes, about 10 of those folks are either direct abutters or close neighborhood residents. We have a representation from Central Square Advisory Committee. We also have Cambridgeport Neighborhood Association member amongst those folks. We have a representative of the Central Square Business Association and a local business owner. We have a representative of Cambridge Community Center connecting with the broader public as well. And then, we have a representative each from our three committees that are around, structured around mobility. So, we have pedestrian committee, bicycle committee, and transit committee represented on this group as well.
Great. Thanks. What about other parameters, like age and background?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we work hard when we, we've heard from the council numerous times about the importance of having as diverse of a group as possible. So, we have worked hard to try to have a range of ages, a range of as broad representation, gender-based diversity, as well as, to the extent that we can, some ethnic diversity as well on the group. And also try to get folks who are, some who are longstanding residents and have been in the neighborhood for a while, as well as some who might have moved and new. So, we've tried to have as broadly representative a group as possible. And we also have folks who use cars, we have folks who bicycle, and those who mostly walk in addition to the representatives from the committees. So, you know, trying to make sure that there are, that all voices are represented on the committee as possible.
Great. Thank you very much for those efforts.
Councilor Carlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to the manager and his team. Obviously, this is very exciting. And obviously, it's, the right-of-way isn't quite as wide as Western Avenue. So, everything is going to be tighter to begin with. And I think one of the successful elements, and I'm sure you all agree, on Western Ave is that there are trees between the bike path and the sidewalk. And my fear is, and I know you can't address this right now, is that we'll have a bike path much like Concord Avenue next to Fresh Pond, which I think is uncomfortable when someone is zipping down the bike path and people are walking near it. But I hope that there's some thought about how does that can be separated in an elegant way. So, $34 million, could you tell us, I assume that's from five to seven different funding sources. That's correct, isn't it? And, or is it mostly city funds?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
It doesn't have to be exact.
Oh, that's okay. And I don't know the exact breakdown, but it's actually, it's all city funding. And it's partially funded through sewer bonds and partially funded through general obligation bonds. So, it is all city funding. A portion of it's coming from sewer funds because, you know, the sort of the underlying part of this project is really looking at the existing city utilities, similar to Western Ave.
To me, that's great. And we've, many of us speak about the city going ahead with infrastructure and not waiting to get all the little pieces from other sources. Thank you for that. It's, when you do a construction job, it's always nice, and usually economic, to attach small related things because you have the big project, $34 million project. Central Square has suffered from asphalt patching on the sidewalk, on the brick, and in the concrete, ever since I've been on the council. And I remember in 1970-something, when I was first a consultant, the city said they would never use asphalt on sidewalks again. And they meant full sidewalks, not just patching. Patching makes sense short-term, more than six months, it doesn't make sense. So, I would encourage you to consider adding, fixing Central Square sidewalks as an add alternate and checking it out. You all know about the broken window syndrome, and sometimes people believe that's overstated. But when you walk through Central Square or my neighborhood and you see patches of asphalt, it only connotes a negative. And Central Square deserves every positive. So, I hope you look at that. And lastly, I think all of us want an update on critical projects. That would be what the recommendations are. It can be through the manager submitting it, as here's the update, what the design is as it evolves. So, we don't necessarily have to call committee meetings to learn what it is if we can't go to the public meetings. And you will find support here. I know everyone, maybe for somewhat different reasons, are, each of us are excited about this. And we just want to be part of the team. And we can encourage you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Simmons.
Thank you. Relative to the membership of the committee, I'm very pleased to see that we're making every effort to make sure that it's representative, not only by people that are shorter-term residents, but longer-term residents, people of color, people of different ages and abilities. What, the letter did not say, it's two things I'm just curious about. One is when the group will be meeting, where, I'm assuming you'll be taking minutes so that for people that are not able to, they'll be able to see what was discussed. I think those are my larger issues, where the meetings were going to be. And if one wanted to know who was assigned or appointed, where would one look? Good pleasure.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting, the first meeting of the working group is going to be January 29. I'm blanking on the location, but we'll look it up. Oh, the Franklin Apartments.
Sorry, please?
Franklin Apartments.
237.
Manning Apartments.
237 Franklin.
Sorry. Apologize. Yeah. Manning Apartments. So, it's convenient for folks right in the neighborhood. But we will absolutely have meeting notes. We'll be posting them on our website. We have a project website set up as well. So, we can forward the link to the council on the next Friday bulletin, if that's helpful.
And through you, Mr. Chair, the time?
Excuse me. The time. We will send you confirmation of the exact time as well in the Friday bulletin.
And because it's a public meeting, are you just meeting there to make it convenient? Or are you meeting there so that you can get as broad a presentation of people? And as each meeting comes through, would you be letting the community know? Or is it really just for the people that are on the working group?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Mayor. The meetings are open to the public. The idea is that the bulk of the discussion would be with the committee members. But we will have time for public comments. So, any members of the public who are interested in attending and speaking will have an opportunity to do so. And you had also asked early on about the point of contact. And so, for the community process, Tegin Taik from CDD is going to be the point of contact.
Sorry?
Tegin Taik. We can send her email address as well when we send you the rest of the meeting information. And there are also lead folks from DPW and Traffic and Parking who are working on the technical pieces and staffing the committee.
And through you, Mr. Chair. So, there'll be staff that's there to support the working group or participating?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The staff will be, well, the working groups is intended to be advising the city on the design specifics. So, the staff will be there working with the group. They are not part of the working group.
I, through you, Mr. Chair, the reason why I ask is, I've had the opportunity to serve on committees. And sometimes when the presence of city folks, even though they're there to be supportive, are large, it thwarts or inhibits the conversation. It's not, it's free-flowing because they, people want to be polite to the staff. And so, they don't say what's on their mind as much. And so, I just want us to be cautious that the presence of the city, even though it's to be helpful, isn't so great that it overshadows the ordinary citizen who might be there. We really do want to encourage their, to speak their minds and their hearts. And then the last thing, is there any training for the committee members in terms of expectations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We were not intending to have any training per se, but the initial meeting or two of any such process involves some discussion and about what the goals of the project are, what are the kinds of topics that people will be working with, and provide, helping get everybody to a similar level of understanding around the issues.
I only ask is because it's always helpful if people have, know what their expectations are. Training, maybe not the best word, but oftentimes, everyone comes to citizen participation from a different perspective and a different place. And so, their people can feel encouraged to participate at the highest level. Sometimes it's helpful to offer some training or a little advisory as to, you know, this is the how-tos. And if you're not able to come, how you can get information and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you have comment?
Yes, thank you. Just quickly, there's a project webpage, I don't think you've mentioned it, on the CDD site, which actually has a lot of good information, including a list of the committee members, a schedule for meetings, a description of the project. And it has a link where people can sign up to receive updates. So, thanks.
Thank you. Two quick things for me, having lived through the Western Ave construction. One of the things that we, that we hear a lot, particularly from residents of 808 and 812, Memorial Drive, is about speeding down River Street. Now, I know on Western Ave, and again, as Councilor Carlin pointed out, the dimensions are not the same. On Western Ave, by, you know, making the lanes less wide, it slows things down. But when there's, there's still, people still go pretty fast when there's no traffic. So, I just, when we're talking about River Street, you know, let's also think about, well, okay, we're going to narrow the lanes, and so people will go slower. But they won't go slower when they're the only car on the road or whatever. And there's a lot of children in 808 and 812, and people come right over that, when they get that green light, when they come off Mass Pike and they have a green light at Memorial Drive, they want to get through it. And they speed through, and there's a park right there. So, let's just, you know, really be aware of what we might want to do to slow some folks down. And then also, you know, that's, people don't always think that River Street has a lot of businesses on it, but it does. You know, Riverside Pizza, Coast Cafe, Cambridge Deli, Chick Chick Boom, all these restaurants, they're also going to be dramatically impacted by this, that they're not, so let's make sure that we're reaching out to those establishments and doing our best to support them through this. Is there anything further? On placing the matter on file, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We now move to City Manager Agenda Item Number Three, a communication transmitted from Louis A. DePiscuali, City Manager, relative to awaiting report item number 18-81 regarding a report on the opening, on opening a public building during extreme heat events, pulled by Councilor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, first of all, thank you for this report. That was very helpful. I noted that it says there are many public housing complexes have air-conditioned cool rooms. And I was wondering if we have identified which public housing complexes don't have cool rooms and what we envision as a solution for them.
Got it. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the members of City Council, thank you for this opportunity to at least provide some additional comments. I don't have an inventory off the top of my head. We can easily check with the Housing Authority or with our partners across the city. Typically, when we do flu clinics, we are physically in a lot of these buildings. But off the top of my head, I don't have an inventory, but I'm sure we can easily find that out.
Thanks. And any thoughts on how we might assist those residents in a heat emergency if there is no cool room in their building?
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm also accompanied by Carrie Susportis, who is the manager of Committee Resilience and Preparedness at our department. So, she helps us to stay in compliance with the plan. So, I can ask Carrie to at least comment a little bit about some of the things that we do on the ground, if that helps.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To answer your question, one of the things that we realize, we have, Cambridge has a heat emergency guidance. We are in the process of updating that. We intend to have another meeting in February and get something out in the spring. But one of the things we intend to do is really align it with the work of the Cambridge Climate Change Vulnerability, excuse me, Resilience Plan, Resilience and Preparedness Plan. So, we'll expand the group that's traditionally been involved with the Heat Emergency Action Guidance to include the latest information from the vulnerability assessment and to align with that Preparedness and Resilience Plan. So, even in terms of, you know, doing the kind of assessment where we can get hard numbers in terms of, you know, who's actually has access to the cool rooms, we'll be able to answer those questions when we convene a larger group.
Thanks. And in reading the report, I And in reading the report, it occurred to me that perhaps we haven't had a real heat emergency yet in Cambridge. We're fortunate in that sense. But it struck me that if we have a situation where there's an extended power outage and we have a heat emergency at the same time, you know, some of these solutions like having coolrooms in the buildings may not, may not work. So I think it is important to really look at, you know, those types of scenarios. But I look forward to the, for the work you're planning to do on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Carlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. When I was a kid, we didn't have air conditioning like many of us. But we had two things. We had an extensive pool system. This was a middle-class community, Levittown, New York. We had an extensive outdoor pool system where all the kids of every background hung out. And the other place was the public library. There's a book out now, I can't remember the whole title, I read it over the holidays, but it's basically A Palace for Everyone. And it's about many things, but the title refers to the Carnegie libraries that were built. And I know at least one person in the room knows what I'm talking about. And it always interested me, why do we close the library? I know it's economic, but why do we close the libraries on Sunday when that's half the weekend, when kids are not in school? And it seems to me that's the cooling spot right there. That's, granted, it's extra help and extra time, but it seems like such an obvious, an obvious location for the summer, given that schools are closed, some of which are air-conditioned. And that we have two pools, I believe, public pools, at least the only two I've been at. And so we don't have much choice here. So my question is, would we consider, seriously consider, opening the libraries, actually, I think every Sunday of the year, they can take off two. And this is part of that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to let Maria speak on this, but believe it or not, it's not, I would say the financial issue is not driving this. It really isn't.
I believe.
It's really a staffing personnel, how much we can do with what we have. But we have actually had discussions about can we do a little more? But it's a valid question and it's something we've talked about very recently. So I'm going to have Maria just briefly talk about it.
Thank you.
I don't disagree with you, we just have not come up with a solution.
Thank you, City Manager, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the great question. So there, it is a staffing, there are some staffing considerations that are challenging. Historically, I think Sundays have been hard to staff because historically it was through volunteering, you know, through our bargaining. And recently, meaning maybe a few years ago, there was an agreement to help, to help to fill those gaps in a different kind of way, but that was a lot of work to get there. So there are, there are issues around giving staff a break on Sundays in the summer. They do work throughout the year, except for the summer, you know, seven days a week in terms of scheduling. So that is a consideration. But one of the things that I've just been thinking about and talking to the City Manager about recently is with the opening of the Valente Branch Library, which will have a community room in the space, that there's a possibility of having the Valente Branch Library open on Sundays in the summer. But that would have to get negotiated through the bargaining process. So that's something we're considering.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, through you, I know library science has college students who look for all the experience they can get. Not that that would satisfy your need, but they're there. They're looking for part-time work in the summer just to put down Cambridge Public Library. I know of one, she's interested in the summer job. That's not why I'm saying this. It just seems like a natural, I think the schools that are air-conditioned are a natural too. Not that many are, but we're going to upgrade them all eventually. And it just seems to me, these are the community centers that we have in addition to the few that we've built. And to not take advantage of it. Also, I did all my studying in a library. And our school, my college, stopped weekends and there was a revolt. It's now open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I just think this is a resource that needs to be maximized. And I thank you for your answers and I know you'll keep thinking about it.
Thank you.
Further questions? I have a quick question, I'm looking at Ellen. Because, you know, we, obviously, we've talked about tenants who during, who don't have cooling rooms and whatnot, but I would like to talk about our homeless community members who have been very grateful for the warming center that's open in the winter, but have also talked to me about summer. And that sometimes, you know, they, they will go into certain establishments in the neighborhoods to stay cool and they're not always welcomed in those establishments and certainly not welcomed for extended periods of time. And so they're outside for, you know, in the sweltering heat a lot of the time. So can we, can you talk at all about what's available for them and how we might think about supporting them through those, those heat waves?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to you, Mr. Mayor. I think that there is a lot of attention paid in the summer by both the Public Health Department, by the Police Department, and by the shelters that are currently available. Because on days where the heat index is very high, there is great concern over the individuals who are homeless and ensuring that they have a place to be. So in the same way that during the acute winter episodes, the shelters that normally are closed during the day are, keep open during the day to ensure. The same thing happens during the summertime in the, when there are significant heat days. We, I would say it would be very challenging right now, and I see Susan Pachico sitting behind me, to try to operate our warming center just as a cooling. It's challenging enough and wonderful to operate it for the months that we do. Not sure we could manage to do that for the summer. But I would say that there really is a very strong network through the first step, through the Police Department, through the Wednesday group that goes around. We have a group of providers, including the police and Human Services and Healthcare for the Homeless, who actually go out every Wednesday to engage with people who are disinclined to be in the various shelters. So what I would say is, I think we have a fairly good system to ensure that people who are in danger are taken care of. Whether that means that everybody who wishes to be in a place in a given moment has a place, I would be foolish to suggest that that's currently available to them.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. One, one final thought, since I see you up at the table. The past couple of years, there have been questions about can we work with DCR to keep their pools open past early August? And that is another opportunity for cooling that I know is challenging from the staffing standpoint. I'm not expecting you to have an answer, but I just want to keep that as a, on the to-do list. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say that we will continue to work, but again, it's not a financial matter. We're just trying to make it happen, but we will continue to do that.
Pleasure, the council. Councilor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the importance of trees in keeping us cool, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Pleasure, the council. On placing the matter on file, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We now move to City Manager Agenda Item Number Four, Communication Transmitted from Louis A. D. Pasquale, City Manager, relative to awaiting report item number eighteen dash twenty-seven regarding a report on audio and video difficulties during live broadcasts of city council, of council meetings, sorry. This was pulled by Councilor Zondervan. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, again, thank you for this response and also for putting the meetings on YouTube. As I had suggested, it's been very helpful in making the audio/video more available to the folks on different devices and when the third-party streaming is not working. I wanted to ask briefly about the redundancy, because these audio/video recordings are a very important part of our record of the meetings. So do we feel now that we have enough redundancy in the system that we won't lose any, any data? And have we lost any, any data in the past?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to you, Councilor Zondervan. The backup that we've put in place does allow us to quickly fail over to other devices. Sometimes it takes a little bit to troubleshoot, to see what's going on. We haven't lost any data. The system is in the cloud and backed up and we're able to usually, if not on the evening of the outage, the following day, we have backup recordings of anything that transpired. But we have a very sufficient backup installation in place with duplicate equipment that we can fail over to.
Great, thank you. That's very comforting to know. My last question is around getting our council meetings more broadly available to folks. You know, for example, just an example, but Facebook is another place where a lot of people engage. And it's, it would be relatively easy to livestream our, our meetings on Facebook, for example. Are we thinking about things like that at all?
Mr. Dino.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Zondervan. We have had some discussions. When the room was specked out, it does not have the encoder box that would allow us to go to Facebook now. There's another piece of equipment to go in. So we figured it'd be best to get the system stable and then we can explore how we could go through and have it streamed on Facebook. There's also the issue of how you can have someone ready to be able to turn it on at the beginning of the meeting, turn it off. It's a little more difficult to automate that, especially where you don't have a fixed end time. So there's other procedures, but technically, it would be possible with some extra equipment.
Great, thank you. And do encourage us to continue exploring that option. Thank you again.
Pleasure, the council. On placing the matter on file, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. The matter's placed on file. We now move to City Manager Agenda Item Number Five, a communication transmitted from Louis A. D. Pasquale, City Manager, relative to awaiting report item number eighteen dash eighty-eight regarding a report on conducting a comprehensive evaluation of inclusionary tenants' experiences with particular emphasis on biased practices. This was pulled by Councilor Siddiqui. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I wanted to make a general comment about the fact that we've heard through our Cambridge Diggs Deep series, that the mayor and I have formed many tenants who've expressed their feedback on this issue. So I'm glad that we were able to move this forward. I do have a question about timeline, that some of us, those who sponsored it, Councilor Mallon and Councilor Simmons, about what that looks like. And any information about that would be great.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have just begun working on the scope for this and have started talking to our purchasing department about the format of the procurement. And this is, this is a little bit new to us. We have not done anything like this in, in the past. And so we're, I think this will not be necessarily the fastest thing we do, because we probably, we want to even consult with a number of departments, as well as some outside folks about our, how we are scoping out this assessment. And we're not entirely positive yet who are the kinds of respondents we'll get, whether it will be survey companies or whether it will be, you know, sociologists or whom. So we want to figure out the balance between scoping things out in such a way that we are identifying the key practitioners that we need without locking it down too much, so that we can get whoever is best qualified to do this. So I think this will be a little bit of a learning process for us and we will be looking for the proposers to help us understand the approach to framing such an assessment. Because this is not exactly a core competency of ours, but we also, we do have staff in the city, in the Department of Equity and Inclusion, Human Rights Commission, which whom we will all be pulling into the process. So timeline-wise, we hope in the next, it will take us the next month and a half, I would say, to get things on the street. And then there is, you know, we have to have the proposal out and before we can get the responses and procurement. So I would say in the next, by the late spring, early summer, we should have somebody on board and then initiate the process with the hope of completing the assessment before the, before the end of the year.
I see, I think my fellow councilor has a question, so I'll yield the floor. But I think, yeah, any, as we, as you move forward, keeping us informed about, you know, the month and a half from now, we really want to make sure that this gets going. And I think it's really important that we think about evaluation in general of our programs. I've talked to Mr. City Manager about a few that, evaluations that I think are critical, one of which is the homeownership program. But I think as we develop tools in the area, the more the merrier, because it is very important to evaluate current programs. Thank you.
Through you, I just want to add one thing. There is no money in the budget for this, so we'll be coming up for an appropriation. So we'll certainly, when we come up, update you, so we can keep you in the loop of what's going on. But that will be coming once we get an idea of what this is going to cost for an appropriation as well.
Thank you. Councilor Simmons, did you want to?
Yes, please, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand your response. It would be possible for you to give it to us in writing.
Through you, Madam Chair. Councilor Simmons, would you, we did give you this response in writing, would you tell us, are you asking about the timeline specifically?
The part that you, where you just, the part where you discussed, you weren't quite sure how to do a questionnaire, that you didn't know the ramifications, just what you just said. I just wanted to have it in writing, if it's that possible.
Oh.
That it's going to take the timeline, the frame of reference, that you're going to need money to do this. Could we get that in writing?
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mallon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. In terms of the timing, I think, I would just, I would love to see those types of things, even if it's a loose outline of the timing in the responses, just so that when we're, we're actually, oftentimes I will refer back to the responses just to see if we're kind of on target or not on target. of on target or not on target. I think it would just be really helpful, both during the meeting to have them, but also as a look back and just make sure we're kind of keeping on target. So I would, I would love to see that, not just on CDD's responses, but the city staff responses. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. On a motion by Councilor Siddiqui to place this on file, all in favor? Aye. Okay. The motion is placed on file. We now move to City Manager Agenda Item Number Six. A communication transmitted from Louis A. Di Pasquale, City Manager, relative to awaiting report Item Number 18-120 regarding the focus of envisioned Cambridge goals during community presentations. This item was pulled by Councilor Zondervan. Councilor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the team. First of all, again, thank you. This is a great response and really appreciate the approach that's being put forward. Appreciate the detail and infographic and the facts. I do have some detailed questions on some of those and I'm sure we'll explore a lot of it in committee as well. But starting with the infographic, it states that multifamily housing cannot be built in all areas of the city, limiting the supply of affordable units. And we've been around this a number of times and I guess I would still like to have some clarity on, you know, is that really true? Or is it limiting our supply? Or is it just limiting where we can build affordable units right now?
Through you, Madam Chair. What this is saying, Councilor Zondervan, is that there are parts of the city that are not available for construction of affordable housing. Because we are, the typical affordable project is generally a multifamily project, just to make the numbers work. So if the zoning in a district does not permit that, it becomes a much more challenging endeavor. And it's hard for the city or the affordable housing developers to take a big risk that they will be, whether they will be able to get the permitting for that or not.
Thank you. So if I'm hearing you correctly, it's limiting where we can build, but not necessarily how much.
Through you, Madam Chair. Well, if there are parts of the city where we cannot build, then it will limit how much. Ultimately, it depends, how much we build in any given year depends on the funding that is available. But if the funding were more, then the greater the availability of parcels, the greater the scope of being able to build would be.
Thanks. So we're not at that limit now, but we could get there as we increase funding. Okay, that was very helpful. Thank you. So I guess one thought I had on that was, I think there's certain areas where we clearly could use more affordable housing construction. And would it be possible to directly require that? So similar to how we have inclusionary zoning, where we require a certain amount of affordable housing to be part of the project, could we similarly require a certain amount of affordable housing in a particular area as new housing is constructed? So that we would directly require it rather than trying to incentivize and hoping that it would, that it would occur? Does that make sense?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to think quickly, but I think this might be getting into a legal question that we should have the city solicitor's advice on. It's a little bit challenging to have requirements based on district, though, because zoning, for sure, is parcel by parcel. So you could require that a certain percentage of a project be affordable, as we do in inclusionary. But if it is to require that an entire project would have to be affordable, that might be a little bit more challenging. What the formulation of the overlay district is suggesting is that what you could require is that if a project is large, that would only be allowed, in certain districts, that would only be allowed if it were 100% affordable. So it's trying to think about it from that side. But I think we would, for your broader question, I think we, I would want to consult with the solicitor before I said anything formally.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that and I agree, it would need further examination. I just, I do want to toss it out there as an idea, maybe to explore. And, you know, the way I think about it is that maybe we would require, for example, that no market-rate units could be built until an equivalent number of subsidized units have been built in that area, something like that. And so it wouldn't be incumbent on any one particular parcel or project or developer. It's just a prerequisite. So you can't build the market rate until the subsidized units are there. And that also anticipates some displacement that might happen as we build market-rate units and rents go up and then people don't have a place to stay. If we anticipate that, we might preclude, avoid some of those problems. And similarly, there's a lot of retail spaces along some of our corridors, you know, that are single-story buildings, for example, where, you know, I mean, when I go by those places, I'm thinking, gee, that should be, you know, there should be housing on top. But there's real logistical problems in making that happen. And so again, I would urge us to think about how can we directly address those issues, right? So how can we preserve the retail tenants that are already in the building through a housing development process? And then can we ensure that they have an affordable rent as well in the new building so that their products can also be priced affordably to the residents and the new tenants? Because one of the other dynamics that we're seeing, right, is that as we build more, we get rid of old businesses that have been here for a long time and then new ones come in, but they're not necessarily offering the same services or at the same pricing levels as the old ones. And so that also creates problems for our residents. So are there thoughts about additional funding? I mean, you mentioned that as well, that as we increase funding, we could run into some of these limits. Do we have, are we anticipating that as part of our zoning efforts?
So through you, Madam Chair. The, in terms of funding, there's two tracks. So one is the funding through CPA and through the city budget. And then the second is through, what we receive through incentive zoning contributions. And the manager will talk about the budget piece, but I'll just mention that from the perspective of incentive zoning, we haven't really started to receive incentive payments with the large, the increased incentive rate. But we have started to think about what that might mean. So that will certainly be quite a bit more than we have been able to generate through the incentive process prior to the council's vote to increase the incentive payments. So that should be materializing over the coming years. And about the budget.
So in terms of the budget, we are in discussions. We have agreed that we will increase the percentage of the building permits from 20% to 25%, which would be approximately an additional $1 million. And then every year the CPA goes up, but obviously, when you're talking, the need of $1 million is not going to solve it, it's a help. So we are continuing to thinking of other ways that we may want to fund this with an increase. It's not going to be a, going to be honest, gigantic number, but I've certainly heard the priorities of the council and I have to come up with a weighted $1 million is not enough and recognize that. And we're trying to think out of the box of what other ways we can help address this. But at this point in time, we don't have all those discussions. I have been in discussion with Mr. Redden about some creative ideas that we're thinking about that we haven't finalized, to be very honest.
Thank you. I, again, really appreciate this and I would encourage us to continue to have as much as possible dialogue with the community and create more buy-in on these different approaches. I think there's a tremendous amount of willingness in the community to address this concern around affordable housing. So as much as possible, you know, include the community in figuring out how we can best do that. Thank you.
Councilor Carlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to go into much detail tonight, but given the previous discussion on this subject, I will. A couple of thoughts. One is, first of all, thank you for the information packet. And I look at, and hopefully you have it in front of you, the chart, Affordable Housing Distribution by Neighborhood. I notice 54,000 units are listed, but in fact, isn't it, aren't some of those dormitories and, I don't know if it's hotel rooms, but if I remember correctly, almost 8,000 are not residential units that residents live in, but dormitories? And I'm trying to think of the other classification, which would raise your percentages if indeed it is 44,000, not including dormitories. So does it, is, does the 54, I had difficulty finding what the number of units were in the city.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I will need to verify this to be sure that I'm not, and if I'm giving you mistaken information, I will correct this. But my recollection is that this does not include dormitories, but it does include things like SRO, single resident, single occupant, sing-
Sure. Single room.
Single room occupancy.
Single room occupancy. Thank you, Councilor Simmons. So those units would be included.
That's fine. Just, I thought the percentages might be a little bit higher than what's indicated here. But what this, what this tells me is that number two MIT, number six MidCambridge, where I used to live, number eight Agassi, number nine, Neighborhood Nine, where I do live, is a little below the 10%. And West Cambridge really are the communities, for obvious reasons, economics, purchasing power, are the ones that are especially low or low. This doesn't include what we never seem to focus on because we don't have the funds, middle-class housing, which whenever we talk to people, they bring up, when I say people, residents. And that's not a complaint on you, I'm just saying that seems to me to be the issue. This, this council, or maybe it was the previous term, I can't recall now, voted nine to zero to raise significantly the amount of money into affordable housing. We set the priorities for the budget. I could say more about that, but I won't go into it now. But it seems to me, we have the power to do exactly what we're saying. And if I understand it correctly, the new housing going up on Concord Avenue in Agassi, the land value was quite high. And it's been incorporated in a clever way through a lease so that state money that came into it, I believe, wasn't affected as far as the amount of money per unit. That's the way we're going to have to do this. Our city policy over the last 20, 30 years has raised, helped raise the value of housing. That's good if you own a house, it's not so good if you don't own a house. Our taxation has done that as well. So I, for one, and I think a majority of the council, want to really do something about affordable housing and not just talk about it. And to me, that means if it's the number one priority and your document states that in the opening paragraph on page 1.6C, it should be funded as such. And it's not a criticism, it's just a reality. We have to get real about this. And to me, it means going after the soft spots in every neighborhood. And as Councilor Zondervan said, we had a discussion earlier today, it's the one-story buildings. It's the parking lots, if there are any, but it's the one-story buildings, which almost all happen to be retail or institutional. And that has to be incorporated into the package. And I totally agree with my fellow councilors, that retail value, cost to rent space, has to be maintained. Maybe the retail doesn't count in FAR. And we have to subsidize the cost of the land purchase in combination with some increase. But on top of that, whatever gets built has to be of good quality and not concrete-sided stacked housing, which I'm sorry to say, we sometimes do. And it's, these are the village centers, potential village centers in every neighborhood, and they should be treated as that. And that means more money. And I'm sure we'll all be talking about this more in the next few months, but I wanted to share that. And considering that we're only talking about adding 50 to 60 new affordable units, and that's affected by both price and owning land, we have to start buying land. One of my fellow councilors might talk about a recent project that, a recent piece of land that was sold, and it was in the ballpark of what we've done on other sites recently, in a neighborhood that I mentioned in the list of five that are low. We should have bought it, even at a premium. And I'm not lecturing, I'm just saying if we're serious, we have to act seriously. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pleasure, the council. Councilor Mallon. Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. Thank you for this information. I think it's going to be very helpful. I think it addresses some of the concerns that we've heard from folks in the community, certainly around issues of community input and historic preservation, the issue of retail. You know, it's obviously no secret that I support an affordable, citywide affordable housing overlay. I think, you know, the details still have to be worked out, right? And so, you know, whether this exact piece of the overlay is exactly the way it should be or not, I think we're still going to have those discussions and figure that out. But we have to do, and this, this is not- But we have to do, and this, this is not going to be solved by just money, it's not going to be solved by just the overlay, it's not going to be solved just by the fact that we raised inclusionary zoning. These are just all tools and all different ways we have to, we have to try to combat a, you know, a housing market that's out of control, right? And there's no, you know, you know, people are moving to Cambridge because the job market is strong, they're moving to Cambridge because it's a great place to live, they're moving to Cambridge for the schools because it's safe, all of these reasons that we love living here. And, you know, when the average salary of, you know, the income for folks in Kendall Square is well over $100,000, you know, those people who are moving here are going to need places to live. And unfortunately, you know, if you're making 150 bucks, 150 bucks, 150,000, working at Google, you know, a teacher, a nurse, certainly a social worker, isn't going to be able to compete with that. And so, you know, and this gets back to sort of Counselor Carlin's question about, you know, middle and moderate income. I mean, the just, the needs are great, and so we do have to be bold, and we do have to do something, and it is going to take an entire city, I think, to address this. So thank you for this information. I assume it's online?
That is correct, Mayor. We have provided the link on, at the bottom of the response.
Okay. All right. Vice, yeah, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, through you. Just because you guys are here, isn't the incentive zoning study, are we about to engage in a new study for that to hope, because the rate would have to go up this coming fall, correct? Or go up or change?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Vice Mayor. Yes, we have, we put out an RFP, we have selected a consultant who has begun work on the incentive zoning study. So in the next few months, we expect to be back to the council with the final report of that process.
Okay. And also just on the subject of middle-income housing, which always seems to fall by the wayside because the need is greater at the lower end, I would assume that the overlay, the potential overlay could be adjusted so that if it were middle-income affordable housing being developed, the density bonus or height bonus might be different because the developer would be able to potentially get higher rents and therefore wouldn't need as many units. I don't know how significant, you don't have to answer that now, I don't know how significant a difference that would make, but it could make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. On the, nothing else, on placing the matter on file, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We now move on to, excuse me, City Manager Agenda Item Number Seven, a communication transmitted from Louis A.D. Piscopo, City Manager, relative to awaiting report item number 18-97 regarding a report on updating vacant property database and reviewing strategies presented in the storefront vacancies best practice report. This was pulled by Counselor Siddiqui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you for this analysis and the report back. I won't go too deep into this, we have a meeting scheduled February 12th on this topic where there will be further questions. One thing I wanted to ask for by then, which was in the original policy order, was detailing the site-specific and district-specific reasons for some of these vacancies. So the storefront report highlights high rents. We've heard anecdotally some tenants who've been pushed out because of high rents and now the place is vacant. So I think that analysis, if you can find it and analyze it, would be important. I think what the database has right now, you've added information that we requested, which included length of vacancy, information on ownership structure and so forth, but if we can tie the site-specific and district-specific analysis, that would be helpful. In addition, the database shows that some of the vacancies have existed, I think I counted 15, for two years or more. And I think that's different from, and it goes back to this question of institutional investors and so forth. So I do want to kind of target these longer-term vacancies because they are problematic. I think less than six months to what is two-plus years mean is, are there properties that have been on vacant for 10 years, 15 years? So that, that's very pertinent analysis, and I think it's very, it's great how much we're doing with vacant storefront, the initiative webpage, I like it all, but I think, you know, and we've decreased vacancies and so forth, but I think the real issue of understanding the particular issues in Cambridge, we have to do more because some vacancies are just much more visible than others and problematic than others. So that's just my, those are my comments, but I look forward to having more discussion about that in our February 12th meeting, and I'm happy to put some of this in writing to you before that. Thank you.
Pleasure to the council. I, just real quickly, thank you, Counselor Siddiqui. I'll use this as, this is a report to talk about the database, but we also, I don't know how many years ago it was now, that I filed the ordinance about, that was twofold. One was about taxing or fining property owners of vacant property after a certain period of time, and then the other piece of it was around sort of the upkeep and making sure that, right. And then that was, and it never went anywhere, and then that was, then it was brought up again. You know, I do think, you know, three years ago. You know, I do think that, we heard this a little bit tonight, and, you know, whether it's two years or, you know, whatever, you know, whatever marker we put on it, you know, we, you can't, you can't have places sitting empty and dark for years and years and years. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, and if, and if it's an issue of they can't find anybody, they can't get the rents they want or whatever, then they need to do other things with that space. I mean, there's, you know, whether those are temporary artist spaces, spaces, or rehearsal spaces, or whatever, if your property is going to sit vacant for long periods of time, it's got, it's got to be lively in some way after, at least after, you know, I'm not saying a week later, you know, you got to give people time, but if it's vacant two, three, four, or five years, we need to, we need to do something about that. And, you know, there's a lot, as the, as more and more of the property owners, particularly in our squares, are, you know, have a lot of money, these aren't small property owners, they can afford to leave it vacant for, for a couple of years, and it really doesn't hurt their, their bottom line any. So, you know, what is, how are we going to push them to move forward more quickly? And then also, you know, the flip side of that is that when we do have someone who wants to occupy a building, we don't need to delay it two years to talk about the color of an awning, right? You know, there needs to, you know, we need to also be glad that somebody, you know, is coming in and is going to occupy a space, and, you know, at some point, we also have to not make it so cumbersome that places don't open. So, I mean, there's a balance of things, but we got to do something to push people to do something with these spaces instead of just keeping them dark. Ms. Faruk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a couple of things I wanted to say related to that. So as a result of your order, your previous order, we actually did the storefront vacancy best practices report, that was one of the things that emerged after that discussion. And we had Lysa Ortiz Associates do the study for us. And in, in looking at all of the different tools, many of which we are trying to build in now, she did not recommend, or our consultants did not recommend having an ordinance or a punitive system as necessarily the best course of action, but actually to figure out a way to provide resources so that businesses of property owners might be able to more easily activate those spaces, or at least make them more attractive to, on the streetscape side. So the challenge being that, and this goes a little bit to Counselor Siddiqui's comment about the reason for the vacancy, which isn't always something, an easy thing for us to one determine, and is not a uniform reason. So some of the longer vacancies, while some of them are, might be, it's actually not that frequently reached. They might be individual property owners, for example, with the Harvard Square Theater, who are just thinking of a major project which is taking a long time for them to ramp off the ground, which is ambitious, and they're not in a terrible rush, like some of the, those who are more bound to investors are usually trying to move a lot faster. Similarly, in my neighborhood, there's the space that used to be Evergood, which is a family-owned building, and that space has been vacant for a while. It's hard to discern the rationale behind why that is vacant, and it doesn't seem like it would be hard because we would not be able to have a different rule system for the individual property owner who might have the space vacant for, for a personal reason versus a larger entity that, that might not be as financially affected by the loss or by a fine. And so the concern was that we might in fact end up hurting the smaller property owners more than the bigger ones who can just absorb that as a, as a loss in their financial statement for the year. So that was why that was not a recommended item, but the pieces that were recommended that we have started to put into action is to try to connect people with either entities that might be able to inhabit that space. So that's why we've created this resource page for storefront activation and connect people, not just to Cambridge Arts, but to other pop-up activation kind of agencies like Space Us or No Longer Empty, so some of those are nonprofits. But the, the other pieces, the, the arts, we're working right now with Cambridge Arts on this art contest to come up with, you know, surface treatment. So we would have artwork that, the winning artwork would be available for people to download and print onto, whether it's paper or it's screen that can be attached to the facade, so that even in instances where something might be leased, so a property owner is not actually able to go into the building, so this happens sometimes as well, that a business either decides to, a larger business either decides to leave town or they go out of business, but there's a lease that is still in place. And so property owners actually not even able to get into the building legally because that would be a violation of their existing lease. And so being able to have something that can be applied to the facade to, so that it doesn't look as problematic, is something that we're working on. So we're trying to work on multiple different levels to address all of the concerns that you and the rest of the council have raised. So we are very much, we haven't abandoned that, we are very much working on that same track.
Thank you. And, you know, and I'm not sure it's an either/or, I mean, certainly we should be working with property owners and helping them, the ones who want to do, you know, to do that. I think certainly in Harvard Square anyway, you know, you're seeing a lot of the new property owners aren't, they're not from here, right? They're out of state, they don't have the same connection to the community, they're not seeing the empty spaces every day, they're not, you know, it's not their community. And sometimes, I hate to say it, but sometimes to get big businesses' attention, you need to hit them in the pocketbook because asking them to cooperate doesn't always work. And so I, you know, I think we have to have both a carrot and a stick, if you will, and certainly be helping, you know, those property owners that, that do want to enliven their space, but for those who don't, and, you know, don't take advantage of those things, then we need to also think about how we're going to address that because it's just not, not good enough to say, well, you know, okay, you don't want to do it, you can keep your storefront dark in Harvard Square for five years. You know, that's not good for the community. I was going to, Counselor Siddiqui had her hand up again. Anyone else, Counselor? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with your previous comments, and through you to Ms. Faruk, I think, do want to add that, that report, while it did have some recommendations, it didn't specifically conclude that the vacant property registration ordinance is something we shouldn't do. It's, it said that there should be a combination of factors. It cautioned about the implications, but we had a discussion at the last council meeting where we said we have to use some of these tools right now, we're going to have a database, we're going to build relationships with property owners and have an evaluation period. So I think that was how I took it, so I think it seems that maybe the staff has maybe come to the conclusion it's not on the table. I'd cautioned to say that we've had, the last meeting that we discussed this, we said that everything's on the table. So I think, and that's how high I read this report, I think they did a thorough analysis of all the various ordinances that exist, but, you know, I'm reading the conclusion here, it says, I won't read it, but I think to Mr. Mayor's point, this, this is, I don't see is it either/or, and I see it, let's find the best solutions we can. So thank you.
Counselor Carlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with my fellow counselor on this issue. I have found in real estate that if you're not tough in a professional way, not overly tough, you get nowhere. If you don't stand up for what you believe in, you get nowhere. And unless a client or developer is highly enlightened, the end result is not positive. So two questions. One, or maybe it's only one question, if, let's use the movie theater, because everybody knows it, in Harvard Square, we know it's affected business on the street, taxes are not changed on the adjacent properties who are losing business without a main activator, is that correct? You might not be able to answer this, I understand that, Ms. Faruk, but perhaps a financial wizard of a person knows that answer.
I would say, without having someone from assessing here, I don't want to specifically guarantee one thing or the other, but obviously all that is in consideration, so I would think that does have some impact as we determine what the values are, but obviously I'd want to confirm that with the assessing office to make sure that's the case.
I thought that was, that makes sense to me. So an empty building pays less tax too, following that same way of thinking. And if, and I realize we're, we have to follow the state and all that, but it seems to me an empty building over a certain period of time, which gets to what the mayor was talking about with fines, they're hurting a street, and somehow we have to encourage them beyond being friendly, which is what Cambridge is, about these issues. Again, if, if we're not common sense on getting a healthy street, we deserve the unhealthy street, sadly.
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to speak for assessing, but I don't think that's the case in terms of the empty buildings value, but I certainly understand what you're saying, but I want to look into that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Just a quick question, is there anything that we can do when we're issuing special permits to new developments that include ground floor retail to set some sort of limit? I'm looking quickly at this list, and I'm remembering that the Porter Square Hotel is, I think, still waiting for a restaurant to open, or has it ever opened? I heard, I remember several months ago hearing that it was about to open, but I don't think it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Vice Mayor. I'm not entirely sure if it's open yet or not, but I, the last time I walked by, it looked like- like it was about to open, but it hasn't, I mean, I don't know for sure if it has or not.
The same, you know, I mean, that's been a problem in Porter Square, the Rand condo building, again, I mean, it's, it just, it feels like those projects are permitted with great hopes, about how they're going to activate the store, you know, the street front, and then, years later, they're still waiting, and that's really frustrating. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Councillor Carlin.
I remember what else I was going to say. A number of us reached out to other cities, who do have a storefront vacancy ordinance, and our closest neighbor, Arlington, considers it successful, and I don't remember all the details, I think my colleagues might, but we don't have to go into that. The point is, that other places do do this, and it has helped, according to their staff. And if nothing else, setting up a very strong dialogue, which to me, is what it's all about. The design review process does it in design review, and this would be a way to enforce it, for storefront vacancies. Thank you.
Councillor Zanderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I do want to reiterate that, as we're going through a zoning process, it's an important opportunity to look at this vacancy issue at the same time. One of the things that we could consider, is that if there are vacant storefronts, that they provide swing space to a business, when we are renovating that building, to build housing, so that the business could temporarily move, we built a new building, the business moves back, and that essentially, we enshrine that into the law, so that there's no choice. If your, if your space is vacant, then you have to make it available at a comparable rent, for this particular purpose. So, again, it's just another opportunity to look at both of these problems, right? We're trying to promote affordable housing, we're trying to promote not having vacant storefronts, there, it seems to me, there's an opportunity here to accomplish both calls.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
I really appreciate this conversation, and I really understand the concerns, but I do just want to say that, when you look at the area, when we go to the rating agencies about our vacancy problem, and it is a problem, I don't want to downplay it, we are still, as a percentage, one of the fewest of any city of our size, anywhere. So, it's an important issue, it's something we must continue to address, but I don't want the public to feel like, all of a sudden, everyone is keeping our occupancy vacant, because it's something that's important we address, but we are still on the high side of, in terms of not having vacancies.
Thank you for that, Mr. Manager. Anything else? On placing the matter on file, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the matter's placed on file. We now move to City Manager, Agenda Item Number Eight, a communication transmitted from Louie A. Di Pasquale, City Manager, relative to awaiting report, Item Number 18-128, regarding creating a Small Business Saturday strategy for the 2019 holiday season, pulled by Councillor Mallon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, to Ms. Farouk. I just wanted to say thanks to you and your team, I know Lisa and Partys worked hard to put this together, and really quickly, I was just looking, we put this in in early December, so it was a really quick turnaround, so I was excited to see some of the things that they, they also are excited about. Some of these programs, I think, are great, and I really look forward to a much more expansive Small Business Saturday next year, this year, I guess. One of the things I wanted to call out, though, is that, the reason why we kind of put this in, is we have been inspired by some other communities that had given parking forgiveness. So, city-owned municipal lots, and parking meters were free on Small Business Saturday, to encourage people shopping in the downtown districts, and I think that that's a really critical piece. If you think about Cambridge, kind of, everybody leaves over that weekend, the whole city kind of, so a lot of who shops, are people coming from other communities, because we do have a really vibrant small business community. So, I would really encourage us to go back to the drawing board on that, and see if we can work with traffic and parking, to put that in this year. I think it would be a huge boon to our small businesses. I think another thing that I was struck by this Saturday, as we were at a community meeting, the Porter Square businesses put together a map of where all their small businesses are, and it was really helpful. I know Councillor Siddiqui and I kind of ran around on Small Business Saturday last year, and we're trying to do it ourselves. I think by the shopping district, it would be great to have a map, and you can put those up in the windows, sort of leading up to Small Business Saturday, and have it be as part of the social media toolkit, and having all the businesses kind of tweet and Facebook, where all the other small businesses are in their district, and how to support them. And then I think, lastly, I would love to see some banners, just advertising that is coming up, stores can put them up in their windows, or they can be in the shopping districts. Like I said, I'm really excited about the list that we came up with, I do think we could make a little bit stronger, and I know you have a great team over at EDD that can, I think, this coming back so quickly shows how excited they were to do this type of thing, so I would just encourage you to take those back to the team, and to traffic and parking, and try to just beef this up a little bit, and have that experience for 2019, for our small businesses.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, those all sound like good ideas, that we will add to the list.
Okay. Anything further? On placing the matter on file, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the matter's placed on file. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, through you, we'd like to give an update, if it's okay, about the power in the area.
Yes, please.
We were hoping to have it up between seven and eight, and we fell a little behind, but we've just been notified that we really believe, in the next hopefully fifteen minutes or so, we will have power up in the area, that has been a concern around the Huntington-Winsor Street location. So, I just, for those people, we have been working on it, and what we really feel like we're getting very close, and apologize for the delay.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We now move on to the calendar, pleasure of the council. We can't take anything off of it, all right, well. Applications and petitions, none. Communications, on a motion by Councillor Simmons, to place Communications One and Two on file, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Resolutions, on a motion by Councillor Simmons, to bring forward Resolutions One through fourteen, making unanimous upon adoption, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Would anyone like to pull a resolution? Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to pull Number One, please.
Number Six.
Six. On the balance, making unanimous upon adoption, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Resolution Number One, resolution on the death of Roy J. Glaber, pulled by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that Cambridge has lost one of its most distinguished professors, and one of our Nobel Prize winners, so we are, have one less Nobel Prize winner in the city, and Dr. Glaber was 93, and was beloved by his students, particularly for his self-deprecating humor. So, extend his family and friends our condolences.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On adoption, making unanimous upon adoption, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Number Six, retirement of Donna Cabral, from the Community Action Agency of Somerville, this was filed by Councillor Toomey, pulled by Councillor Zanderman. Councillor Zanderman, you pulled, do you want to, Resolution Six, you filed it, retirement of Donna Cabral, Councillor Zanderman pulled it, you want to speak to it, or you want to yield to him?
This is a longtime friend of mine, from East Cam, Donna Cabral, who's dedicated her, most of her life to Hitzar programs, and working with our young children, she's retiring after many, many years, and most recently, she's been at the Community Action Agency of Somerville, so she's having, possibly retiring, and having a nice party for her in the end of January, and just want to wish her well, and thank her for her many years of service to our young people.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Zanderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, I just wanted to understand what this was, and also procedurally, how that works, because there's no details in here, so who prepares the resolution that will be sent to her?
It'll be, the whereas's will be filled in. On adoption, making unanimous upon adoption, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We now move forward to policy orders, on a motion by the Vice Mayor, to bring forward the policy order list for consideration, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Pleasure of the council, Councillor Simmons.
Pull Number One.
Number One.
Mr. Mayor.
Number Five.
Five. Yep.
Three.
Three?
Three.
Is it? Councillor Zanderman?
Number Eight.
Councillor Siddiqui?
Number Six.
Anything else? I've got One, Three, Five, Six, and Eight, right? On the balance, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Toomey?
Just wanted to record in the negative on Number Four.
Councillor Toomey is recorded in the negative on Number Four. We go, now we go to policy order Number One, that the City Manager has requested to direct the appropriate city personnel to compile a report outlining how a prolonged federal government shutdown may impact the people of Cambridge. This was filed by Councillor Simmons, Councillor Mallon, Councillor Toomey, and Councillor Siddiqui. Go to Councillor Simmons.
Thank you. I'm sure we're all a bit amazed and surprised, that we are in the 24th day of a shutdown, but we're all very, very aware of what the impact has had, and the, this policy order is to ask our city to kind of look at it, as to, you know, what happens. I really had hoped, believed, that this would be over by now, and held back by even offering it, but when we still were in a logjam on Thursday, I said, "It might be important for us to figure out what kind of impact this freezing of federal employees' jobs is going to have on Cambridge." I know a number of us have received an email from Cheryl M. Pizzoli, and she talks a little bit about what the impact is going to be, how it's going to impact Section Eight-based assistance, how it's going to impact Section 202, Housing for Elders, how it's going to impact public housing, the Public Housing Capital Fund, how it's going to impact the Housing Choice voucher program, how it's going to affect the grant program, just to name a few. A few folks have come by and says, "What does this mean? If I'm, if I have a Section Eight voucher, what happens to me?" Now, I understand that the Housing Authority believes it may be able to hold on for some of its programs to the end of February, and other programs to as late as March and April, but that's just the housing programs, it doesn't talk about SNAP, and some of the other programs. It hasn't gone unnoticed, to me, and I hope not, to my colleagues, that the folks that are on furlough, who, what they, who do they look like? They're one of the, they're some of the lower-paid folks, they're contract citizens, who, it's only crimes they work for the federal government, and the federal government can't get it out of its own way. And so, it's just extraordinarily unfortunate, and so, I thought it was very important that we start to look at, not only for now, should this ever happen again, we'll be prepared, but what is this impact going to be to us? Are there any federal employees in our own midst, that are, that need help? Should we be fortifying our full pejorative, should we be reaching out to our interfaith community, and asking how, and when, or should they be able to participate and help out? So, I, again, I'm just stunned that we're here, you know, it's, I was, I listen to the television pretty regularly, and I thought Mexico was paying for the wall, but I guess that's, that wasn't the case. But very, in all seriousness, it's really putting, making people fearful, it's really making people fearful, and, you know, Cambridge has a very robust economy, but we, we need to be proactive and not reactive, and look at what the impact would be, and hope that we never have to address it. So, I acknowledge and thank my colleagues that have stood with me on this issue, I hope the entire council will get behind it. I do have an amendment that I wanted to offer, but I, if folks want to speak to the order, I can stand down, and then offer the amendment later, and then have discussion on that.
Okay. Councillor Mallon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanted to say that this has been something that is on the minds of many, many people, especially those of us who care for residents who are in vulnerable situations. I know it was of comfort to me, to see Ms. Alou from CEOC come and speak so candidly about what is going to happen, what they're doing, and how we can get that information out to residents, because I hadn't heard any of that until today, I had been worrying that, you know, our residents were going to be showing up at Market Basket or Star Market, and there would be no money on their EBT card, or that they weren't going to be getting their portion of their Section Eight vouchers from the government, and then be evicted. I mean, I saw, I think we've all seen, that 30,000 to 40,000 residents in the United States, that's actually going to happen this month, and it will continue to happen. So, just getting some of that information out there, and fortifying our resources, and trying to figure out how best to handle this, if it continues to go on. I mean, I hope that we wake up tomorrow, and it's over, but I think there are vulnerable communities here in Cambridge, that probably need a little bit more reassurance than that, so I'm surprised and shocked that we're in this space that we are, but I do think it's a good idea to go through this exercise, and make sure that we are doing what we can do to prepare for the worst.
Pleasure of the council. Councillor Siddiqui.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll just echo my furlough colleagues on this, because that Fresh Pond Apartments on Friday night, and I got many questions about this, and the implications, so however we can work with CEOC, the better. Tomorrow, the National Low Income Housing Coalition will be hosting a national call at 4:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, I'll tweet the information out, but it'll be a national call about the impacts of the government shutdown on affordable housing and community development programs, we're hearing from some of the major players, including National Low Income Housing Coalition, so I encourage people to tune in, and I'll be, talk to Tina and others about it, to see if there's any more information that we can get.
Mr. Chair.
Councillor Simmons.
Yeah, one other thing I wanted to add, one thing that, so I doesn't speak specifically to, but the impact of utility, you know, can the utilities companies lean in some way, you know, as people start to fall behind, small landlords, what can we do when their tenants are not paying the rent, because they don't have the money, you know, is there, is there some kind of grant, or some extension on bills? I mean, there's, these are some of the things that we just want to start thinking about, as this time goes on. Again, I hope very much, as I hope all of us do, that we'll wake up, and they'll say, "Something happened." But until that time, you know, these are some other kinds of places that we can look. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to read the...
I just want to say one thing, but I can do it after you do the...
Councillor?
I just want to say one thing, but I can do it after...
Whatever, your pleasure.
So, first off, I just want to thank Councillor Simmons, Mallon, Siddiqui, and Toomey for putting this order in. I wish I could say that I was shocked and surprised, but nothing shocks and surprises me anymore, unfortunately. If the council, and again, you know, this is one of those things, we could wake up tomorrow, and things could be resolved, but if the council would support, maybe we can work with the City Manager, between the council office and the mayor's office, maybe to set up some information services in City Hall for next week, where have CEOC come, and some other folks to come, where, and put it out there for people who might be impacted by the shutdown, could come to City Hall and get information, so we can, if folks are willing to help out with that, I think that might be something that would be helpful, we could, hopefully, we plan it all, and we don't need it, but that might be something we can, we could put together.
Absolutely.
So, but that, but thank you, thank you for putting this in. So, go ahead, Councillor Simmons.
So, the amendment would be an additional order at the end, and it'd say, ordered, that the city clerk, and I have this typed up, to our clerk and deputy clerk, that the city clerk be in...
Absolutely.
So, but that, but thank you, thank you for putting this in. So, go, go ahead, Consul Simmons.
So, the amendment would be an additional order at the end, and it'd say ordered that the city clerk, and I have this typed up to our clerk and deputy clerk, that the city clerk be hereby is requested to forward a copy of the policy order to the Cambridge delegation to the State House, with the hope that similar legislation will be filed to urge Governor Baker to explore and report back on what the Commonwealth can expect from a prolonged shutdown, and what steps can be taken to mitigate the impacts upon our most vulnerable residents.
Do you want to send it to the Cambridge delegation and the governor's office?
Yes.
On the amendment, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. Is there further discussion? On the order as amended, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. We now move on to policy order number three. That the city manager is requested to confer with the managing director of the Water Department on whether the department is monitoring aged pipelines to prevent unexpected breaks, and if information on the age of the pipes is readily available. This was filed by Consulor Tumi, and pulled by Consulor Tumi. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, we talked quite a bit about this situation last week, and the vice mayor mentioned about some similar, I have here before us tonight. What I have here tonight is just a repeat of what I submitted on November 3, 2014, to ask the city to look at the ages of the pipes throughout the city, and sort of look at which ones are the oldest, and see if it's possible that we should be replacing them now before we have this catastrophic situation. So, it's just, I believe that this pipe on Mercer Circle was 1867. So, all I'm asking, again, we're never going to report back on this unfortunately from November 3, 2014, is that, is there a way that we can have some type of a table that shows the age of the pipes, where they're located, and should the city be more proactive in replacing them now before the disruption to the residents of the city? So, it's just a repeat of what I filed four years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Carlo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a wise policy order in 2014, and sadly, it's even wiser now. I just wanted to tell a quick story. It's with the M W R A, not the city's water system. I was working on a project, and I was told there was a large M W R A pipe that was about the same age, probably a little more recent, but like 1880. And I said, well, when we dig up the site next to it, maybe you want to explore the pipe? And their response is, don't go near the pipe, it might break. So, there's something to exactly what you're saying, that there is a relationship between age, clearly, and there are cameras and things that can explore a pipe. So, I just wanted to say you're right on target. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think everyone has before them a friendly amendment I'd like to add to this policy order, and first, I'd like to thank Consulor Tumi for being prescient four years ago. Those aging pipes are now four years older than they were four years ago. But as we were listening tonight to the manager and the fire chief and other staff talk about the very excellent response to the victims of this morning's fire, I couldn't help but look at the expressions of some of the people who had recently come the past two weeks to tell us about their experience with a disaster, but not a fire, a flood. And the contrast, I'm, you know, afraid to say, is, is, is pretty stark. So, that has prompted me to offer this amendment to the order, which reads that the city manager be and hereby is requested to review the city's disaster response to victims of flooding from major, and I believe maybe I should add, city infrastructure failures, and to consider whether the mayor's disaster relief fund and other support services can be deployed to help the flood victims. There, you know, I mean, I realize that the, the monetary amounts that the Red Cross offers per diem are not significant in the grand scheme of things, but merely the act of gathering support services and representatives of various city offices in a nearby location, for instance, you know, either the BBNN school or the Armenian church could have been used to bring the victims together, to talk to, you know, the various people they need to talk to, and just to commiserate, if, I mean, I realize that there are other issues at play, but the simple act of acknowledging that it is a disaster, and that the city and various nonprofits have a role to play, I think, would have made a big difference. So, I know that it's, you know, late coming for, for these people, but I would hope that in the future, we can think about how we can improve our response for all kinds of disasters. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Constable Tumi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, would this be for going forward for flooding from cities, pipes breaking? Is this?
Well, I, I mean, I'm suggesting that it be considered, and I guess it would be up to the manager and the staff to, to tell us if they will consider it, and, and what, you know, context they'll consider it. You know, I'm not looking to, to go back for years and years of floods, looking for victims of, of prior floods, but given that we have had people who tell us they're still living in hotels due to the damage, and are still, have furniture spread across their lawn, and are still recovering from this flood that was a couple of weeks ago, certainly some of them may be able to use some of the support surfaces that we, services that we offer to the victims of fires. And going forward, I, I would like to have a coordinated response, so that we don't only think of disaster as fire.
Consul-
Mr. Mayor, I'm still unclear, would this pertain to the unfortunate incident at Mercer Circle in Broward Street? And the reason I'm questioning that is, if we're, I know some other individuals within the past couple of months have had some major flood damage too, should this apply to any victim from the past year or something? And I understand the, the sentiment behind this, and I probably would support that, but I'm just trying to, I think this probably would be best as its own separate policy order. I think this is going to raise a lot of legal questions, and I, I think I'd rather just see my policy order be adopted tonight, so they can work on that. If this is attached to that, would that slow down the response because of the legal issues involved? Because the city right now is, is not legally responsible if we want to change that. I have no problem changing that. So, I'm just concerned that, I'd rather they focus right now on, on that, my policy order as is, but I would support this policy order as a separate standing, because that's going, I'm sure it's going to go to the legal department, and I just don't want the whole thing going to the legal department, I guess, so. I just don't want that to be delayed anymore. That was four years ago, so. I think a separate policy order is probably the best mechanism. None of anybody else?
May I respond to that, please?
Go ahead, Vice.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but the city isn't at fault in the fire either, so far as I know. I mean, the cause is under investigation, but there's no reason to believe that, that the legal issues of offering Red Cross services and potentials, potentially some other support services is any different in this case. And I would note that I hope that my policy order last week, which was very similar to this one, asking for a report on how we are proactively, you know, maintaining and reviewing aging water infrastructure, it's essentially the same request in terms of wanting a report back on what the heck is going on with our water mains, how old they are, and what we're doing to preventatively maintain them. So, that, that answer, hopefully, is already happening, but if we can-
I think, I think the question, if I hear Consulor Tumi correctly, is just about whether it's included in his order or it comes in separately, not that it's, that he's against the order. Consul Simmons?
I think, I thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the vice chair. Is this going forward? You're asking for this information to look at city's-
Yeah.
What's the words? Provoked? I, I'm sorry. Are you asking us to look at, going forward, not looking back, but going forward, should this, can the city look at disaster relief with a broader view?
Yes, certainly going forward. I, I would like us to, to do that, but I also think that we do have victims who are still sitting here in the room, who are telling us they are still trying to deal with the effects of a disaster that was barely three weeks ago. So, I think it would be a little bit arbitrary to simply say, well, we're not going to, I mean, my order last week asked for an informational community meeting, and at this point, that's probably the best way to, to handle that. But certainly going forward, and I think we can, you know, we can do a better job, and that's all this is asking. Thank you.
Consul Zandervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support this amendment, whether we do it as an amendment, or we could do it as a, a separate policy order right, right now, tonight. I would also encourage us to, to think about maybe not, not saying major infrastructure failure, but just victims of flooding. We're, we're going to have a lot of flooding in our city going forward with climate change and, and other disasters. So, the, the mayor's disaster relief fund, as I understand it, is, these are donated funds, and so we can have our residents contribute to helping other residents who are the victims of flooding without any issues about who's legally responsible.
Well, I don't know, the first part of, I, when, when, two years ago, when Mayor Simmons at the time was, was, sort of, the, the fund had been there for years, and then it, thank God, we hadn't had sort of a disaster that it needed, we had to sort of resurrect it, or Mayor Simmons had to resurrect it, and there were a lot, it, it was far more complicated about what we could and couldn't do than I think either one of us expected it to be. So, I'm not going to go, you know, I'm not going to go as far as tonight and say we can just use it for, because it's, that was sort of what my thought was two years ago, and, and it wasn't, so we are going to have to get some kind of legal opinion about what we, what we can use it for and what we can't. But I would say two things. One is you're correct, Consul Zandervan, that it is, the mayor's disaster relief fund is not something that the city funds, it's, it's based on contributions from the community. I will say, as a plug, the, the fund that was started tonight for, this afternoon, for the, for the fire victims only has $2,000 in it, so if anybody's watching on TV, please, $5, $10, $15, $20, please contribute, because it's, it's not city money. The city cannot legally do that, not that we wouldn't want to. So, it is, so that, that's, you know, that fund might have a lot of money in it at a certain point, it might have no money in it, right? So, that makes it, you know, that's just something to know. And I'm wondering if we're going to pass this, I mean, why are, why are we saying flood, right? What if we get hit by a tornado? You know, should we talk about just disasters, period? Because we're going to, God forbid, we do get hit by a tornado, we'll be back here saying, oh, we should have done, you know? So, let's just cover everything and get a, get a report back from the city solicitor on what the mayor's disaster relief fund can be used for, and what it can't be used for.
Mr. Chair, if I may, that's a very important point that you make. Even as recent as this afternoon, we were talking about the disaster fund. We had said in, you know, time gets away, gets in the way of things as you're doing something else. We had said at the end of the disaster relief episode, if you will, that we were going to look at structures through which, because it, it looks very easy on the outside, believe me, it is not. It is very complicated, and you have to walk a very fine line, and it's very restrictive, and as, as Mayor McGovern says, it's not our money, it's individuals' money. And so, I respectfully say, certainly, the, the order go forward, it can't go back. It, it needs to go forward, saying we will look at disaster relief with a, through a broader lens, and I think that's the right thing to do. I would certainly support that, because disaster is disaster. People tend to focus chiefly on fires, rather than water or any other episodic kind of disaster, disaster. So, I support it on its face, saying let's look forward, let's look at it, at it, and look at disasters with a broader lens, but please know that is, it's very delicate, and it's very difficult, once the money is collected, to even to, to collect in, then it dispenses the funds.
And then there's a little bit of a monitoring too, because some of the funds weren't used as they should have been used, so that brings up a whole other issue. Consul Mallon and the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I was working in the mayor's office when this fund was set up, and it was my responsibility to work with the finance department to make sure it happened in response to this fire on Alston Street in Cambridgeport, which was a Section 8 low-income housing community where everyone lost everything. And it was set up in response to the fact that the people that lost everything had nothing, and could not just go get another apartment. And I think the Berkshire Street fire was another situation where there were a lot of very low-income people who lost everything and couldn't, you know, having a Section 8 voucher doesn't always guarantee that you get a place here in Cambridge. Many, many families had their children in schools, so there was, those two fires were the ones that were driving the mayor's disaster relief fund. I think one of the things that struck me tonight wasn't so much about a relief fund as much as the response. And so, I think, you know, this amendment is sort of right on the money in terms of how are we going to respond to future disasters, whether they're on Mercer Circle, or they're, you know, on Berkshire Street? So, I think we do, as a city, like I said this morning, it was a well-oiled machine, but it didn't happen for Mercer Circle, for whatever reason. So, what is the response from the city when there is a disaster, whether it's flooding, whether it's fire, whether it's a tornado, whatever it is? I think we need to codify that, and I don't know, you know, to Consul Tumi's point, I don't know actually that this is the right place to do this. I would be very supportive of coming up with something that is asking the city to come up with a real response plan, but I, I would say that it needs to be separate from this and go in possibly next week. I know that I spoke with the city manager last week around this particular issue of the water pipes, and I know that he was working with the water department. I think it's probably going to be a welcome order that's already underway, and we could see that come back pretty quickly. I think this response issue, and whether or not the fund would be implicated in that, is going to take a little bit longer. So, I am supportive of this amendment. I'm not sure I am supportive of it, together with this particular order that Consul Tumi has offered.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
In the interest of everyone's patience, I will withdraw the amendment and rework it. We don't have a meeting next week, so it'll be the following week. I would say on tornadoes and hurricanes, I did consider that, those are, those are disasters on an entirely different scale in most cases, and then we have things like the federal FEMA, and, you know, I mean, there, there are, the Red Cross would be here if we had a tornado that swept through, whether it was West Cambridge or East Cambridge, or a major hurricane. So, I, I was trying to focus on disasters that are, you know, more limited to municipal disasters, but I will, you know, look at this. And I, and, you know, it, it isn't about, at the end of the day, it isn't about the relief fund and the money, and given that it's based on individual contributions, you know, there may be some disasters that inspire everyone's great generosity, and there may be others that people say, well, I'm sorry, those people are well, you know, well insured, and that, that is just the reality of, of, you know, the many demands that people see locally and internationally for, for support. But I, I do, I do feel that our response, defined very broadly and holistically, and in a not necessarily material financial thing, was lacking on this, and I think everyone agrees on that. And so, I will withdraw the amendment, and we'll figure out how to get this moving forward. Thank you.
Consul Zandervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to support that approach, and be happy to work with the vice mayor on that. I, I do have a little bit of a response. I, I agree that a hurricane or a tornado is- I, I agree that a hurricane or a tornado is, is probably a different scale, but we do have the danger of, of inland flooding. And, you know, it could be a question mark as to whether that's really a infrastructure failure or just the fact that when the infrastructure was built, it wasn't, you know, we weren't anticipating climate change. So, so there might be a way to word it so that it really gets at the, at the right.
Yeah, why don't we, 'cause that's not, you know, in front of us now.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll work on that. And then, and then the other one, on the disaster fund, and, and I don't know exactly how that's structured, but it might be possible also for people to earmark their donations for a specific disaster, again, going forward, so that people can decide if they want to contribute to disaster relief for a particular incident, rather than us having to decide in general, you know, all the different disasters that, that could be supported that way.
You're looking at me, Counselor? Yes? You wanna? No, Counselor Toomey.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were looking at me, Counselor. Just very briefly, appreciate Vice Mayor submitting a separate policy order. I just, to me, this is an equity issue, too. I don't know how I could look at somebody who recently was flooded in their basement and the city not providing assistance. So I think this could have generated some lawsuits and some not good issues for the city. I think everybody in this room is in the right place of how we assist people in future disasters, and I think that's what we have to do, move forward. I just think this would cause, if earmarked for one, it's just gonna cause a lot of resentment, and we should be focusing on the positive, and it's an equity issue to me.
So I've been told by the clerk that because I read the amendment, it now belongs to the body, which means Vice Mayor Deveraux needs to ask for unanimous consent to withdraw her amendment.
Vice Mayor Deveraux hereby asks for unanimous consent to withdraw my amendment.
All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is officially withdrawn. If there's no further discussion on the policy order, all those in favor say aye, those opposed.
Mr. Chair?
Nay, the ayes have it.
Are we leaving policy orders?
I'm sorry?
Are we leaving policy orders?
No, we're just, we're, we just passed Counselor Toomey's, and now we're moving on to number five.
Okay. If we leave policy orders, I wanna ask for consideration.
I can't hear you.
Before we leave policy orders, I'd like to ask for consideration on a policy order.
If I can't hear you, I know Counselor Toomey can.
Before we leave policy orders, I would like a consideration on a policy order.
All right, we go to policy order number five, that the Neighborhood and Long-Term Planning Committee hold a public hearing to explore the feasibility of Transit X and their potential to provide an affordable, equitable, safe, practical, congestive, congestion-reducing, and eco-friendly public transportation solution for our community. Filed by Counselor Kelly, Counselor Zandervan, Counselor Carlon, pulled by Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask unanimous consent to withdraw this order.
Counselor Kelly asks unanimous consent to withdraw this order. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the order is withdrawn. We move to number six, that the city manager has requested to confer with the Community Development Department and the city's legal services providers on establishing a system of information sharing and/or alternative method for making available that data which may be beneficial use to the city in analyzing displacement. This was filed by Counselor Siddiqui, Counselor Simmons, Counselor Mallon, Counselor Carlon, followed by Counselor Siddiqui.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to briefly touch on this. Heard through public comment, talking about the book Evicted and so forth, and wanted to just say that, you know, that's a, that's a great book, everyone should, should read it. And I think a lot of the data that we're seeking is, it's out there, it's, it's, it's just a process to, to get it. And I think we have partners who deal directly with these issues, who'd be willing to share it. And some of these, these are just examples of outcomes. There's a long, long list. To people's earlier comments, just about, you know, the different varied definitions of eviction, that's very true. And I think that the prior order that was put in gets to some of that, the fact that displacement is defined differently. And that's all something that I'm very committed to figuring out and digging deeper on as the Tenant Displacement Task Force will meet this, this term. So keep it posted. I think there'll be a lot of things that come out of what we learn from the, from the data collected. So thank you for the support on this.
Pleasure of the council. Counselors Zandervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna speak in enthusiastic support. I think this is a really great policy order, and I hope that we can get a response in a timely manner. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I wanted to mention that Evicted is actually a museum exhibit in Washington at something called the National Building Museum, which I hadn't heard of before. And I plan to visit it at the end of this month, and it will still be open for those of us who attend the National League of Cities Conference in March. So you can find information. It's, it's with the participation of the Invicted Lab and Matthew Desmond.
I think the National Building Museum is where Counselor Carlon used to go to play.
I was, excuse me, I was just looking at the, the website to see if it was open because during the shutdown, and it doesn't, it says it was closed today because of inclement weather, but I hope that it's open because the government.
I, I believe it's, Mr. Mayor, I believe it's separately funded, but I, I'm not sure. It has the best gift shop in Washington, D.C.
Oh.
Lot of architecture.
I hope it's not funded by developers. We now move on to policy order number eight. Oh, on the order, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it. We now move on to policy order number eight, that the city manager has requested to work with the Community Development Department and the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities to explore the feasibility of designing the next iteration of the Cambridge Community Electricity Program, filed by Counselor Zandervan, Vice Mayor Deveraux, Counselor Mallon, Counselor Siddiqui, pulled by Counselor Zandervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did wanna briefly explain what this was all about. I realize it's, it can get a little technical, but as was pointed out during public comment, we tried, we tried over the last two years to get people to sign up for the voluntary aspect of the Community Choice Aggregation Program, and it, it is very difficult to do. So one of the goals here is to create some more attractive options that, that people might get excited about. But briefly, the Community Choice Aggregation allows the city to negotiate on our behalf to obtain electricity. And it was primarily set up to reduce the cost of electricity to the basic service rate payers, and that has played out very well. I believe we saved over $5 million for our rate payers in the last year and a half through this program. And the, the next two years, so we're entering into a two-year contract now, and we're expecting, those, those rates going in are already lower than whatever source is charging us, and we're expecting that that will be true for the entire two years, though we can't, of course, guarantee it. But then what, what the staff and some other communities have been able to do is purchase renewable energy certificates that essentially offset some of the electricity consumption so that it, it comes, effectively comes from renewable sources. But it's important for people to understand that whether we are buying renewable energy certificates or not, the power is actually primarily still coming from fossil fuel sources, over 80%. So what the staff has, has done for this program for the next two years is to consider whether we could, instead of buying renewable energy certificates, whether we could do direct investments in community solar in or near Cambridge. And they were able to design a program that would allow us to do that, which I think is really exciting, because that is a more direct way for us to create renewable energy, and it also turns into further savings for our rate payers, because that community solar electricity is actually cheaper to the rate payers than the conventional electricity. So for, for those reasons, I think the program that we're now entering for the next two years is already a great improvement. And so what this policy order asks is that we then consider additional ways that we can design the program, which, which will require some input from the Department of Public Utilities that regulates these programs, to fund not just community solar projects, but also through the voluntary part of the program. So when people sign up to pay a little bit more for their electricity, that instead of buying renewable energy certificates with the additional money, could we use that money to improve the energy efficiency of existing buildings in our community? And again, this creates additional benefits, because if we focus on buildings that are particularly energy inefficient, then we improve both the comfort of those residents and we reduce the cost to them of their utility bills. So this is another way that we can benefit people in our community who might be cost-burdened, who might not be able to pay to improve their own comfort. And through a program like this, we could help members in our community benefit and reduce our emissions by improving our energy efficiency in existing buildings, which is a big challenge that's identified in our Net Zero Action Plan. How do we improve those existing buildings? And hopefully, a program like that would be exciting to people who have the means to voluntarily, voluntarily pay a little bit extra, we're talking about a few pennies per kilowatt hour, that would then directly benefit other members of the community in, in this way. So I wanna thank my co-sponsors for supporting this policy order, and I hope that we're able to continue to build on this program and the success that we've already had to improve the energy efficiency, reduce our emissions, and improve the comfort of our residents.
Thank you, Counselor. Pleasure of the council. On adoption, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the matter is adopted. We now move to committee reports. There are two, pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kelly?
I would like to pull number one, please.
On number two, the question comes on accepting the report and placing on file. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it. We now move back to number one. Communication was received from Donna P. Lopez, city clerk, transmitting a report from Counselor Craig Kelly, Chair of the Public Safety Committee for a public hearing held on December 18th, 2018, to explore the responsibilities and capacities of Cambridge Police Department officers or other officers working in Cambridge under CPD authority, such as out-of-town officers working on a construction detail, to respond to bike-related collisions. Question comes on accepting the report and placing on file. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The big takeaway from this meeting, which I think surprised pretty much everyone in the room, is that we don't have any way of collecting information about non-motor vehicle related collisions. So the Registry of Motor Vehicles is a registry of motor vehicles, and when you, like me, get hit by someone on a bicycle, there's no form to fill out. There's, there's nothing that works. So as we look towards the future, which I think is going to be much more full of scooter this and scooter that and so forth, we need to be much more aggressive with the state authorities that control some of these reporting and citation and other types of measures, as well as planning processes, to make sure we're filling in the regulatory gaps. So if anyone knows anyone at the RMV that we can talk to, that would be great, but in the interim, it's just an interesting place to think that we've got a lot of gaps in this new stuff that we kind of thought would be solved somewhere, but when you look a little deeper, it turns out that they're not.
Pleasure of the council. On accepting the report and placing on file. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Roundtable minutes, there are none. Communications and reports from other city officers, there is one. Counselor Carlon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I've included is an urban design review of the city's latest urban design plan. And you might think, oh, that's not of very much interest, but it's directly related to the council goals of 2017. And I listed those goals and make a relationship. And actually, urban design is very much about aspirations and city goals and how they're integrated and treated in the plan. And I won't go through this in detail, but mention some of these things, some of the issues that I've written about are things that all of you have brought up at one time or another. The necessary connection of the quadrangle to the red line station and the triangle. A future commuter rail station needing to be indicated on this plan, there's an obvious place for it. How do pedestrians and bicyclists get across Concord Avenue to the Fresh Pond Reservation? What are the use projections? That is, how much housing? There's a lot of questions I have that I don't even think we're projecting 40% housing, which I think is a major mistake. And something I alluded to today, the social infrastructure. There are no libraries, there are no schools, there are no playing fields. In essence, there's no social fabric, or very little, in the plan, and that's what makes any neighborhood work. Congestion reality and its relationship to building use. This is a very congested part of the city, and the more office and industry and trucks we have, the more congested it will be, times three. And there's a relationship to land use and congestion. On green design and open space system, just clarifying what is the strategy. There's some good, very good things about this plan, but more needs to be developed, how the diagonal linear park really, how all diagonal linear parks work, and this one doesn't incorporate that. And if this is an environmentally sensitive area, we probably should be looking at either regulating, requiring a green roof or a solar panel roof that might serve as community solar. The size of the street pattern and blocks, some of these blocks are 1,000 feet long by 350 feet, and they can be broken down. The retail street that's being proposed is not directly connected to the main traffic areas. All retail areas in the city are on the main roads. I'm not suggesting that the retail should be on Concord Avenue in the quadrangle, but it should be 90 degrees to that and not 700 feet in, which is what the proposal is now. Airwife Square, so-called Airwife Square is, needs rethinking. The scale of development adjacent to Sancta Maria facility needs to be rethought, it's too small. Public infrastructure, that is not social infrastructure, but public, this area's been looked at as the public works potential location. And the fire department, there's no fire stations also being looked at here. And then some concluding questions. I intend to have a Neighborhood Long-Term Planning Committee on following up on this, but please keep in mind, a drawing is not a plan. It's not a strategy. You need to develop the whole thing. And if there's one area of the city that desperately needs this, it's Greater Airwife, or all the problems with new development that are there will be multiplied many times over. So I, I've done this to share and to give to those interested in Airwife, but anything that happens in Airwife is going to affect the whole city in many different ways. And so I wanted to share that with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, through you. I, I want to express my deep appreciation to Counselor Carlon for putting into words many- many of the same thoughts that I had. I attended the, the last meeting of the Airwife, Envision Airwife Working Group, where the plan was presented, and it was a pretty, I have to say, a pretty lackluster meeting. It, it seemed to me as though the process had kind of run its course, and, and there wasn't very much participation, really. And I left with a lot of questions about whether, what was the sort of pretty drawing with all of the apparent green, which I have to say is, you know, if you, if you eliminate Fresh Pond and you eliminate the street trees, you're left with very little green. And, you know, I just, I have some real concerns about how that is being presented, and I couldn't have put into words nearly as cogently as Counselor Carlon did. So thank you, and I hope people will read this, and I hope there will be a hearing so that it can be discussed with the staff. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just follow up on that. A lot of urban design is really common sense, and it does incorporate the committee meetings' comments, and I tried to relate it as well as I could, but one of the comments was exactly what you said. The fundamental open space system is street trees, and we know how successful that is. So how can we make it more successful? I do ask for more open space. I won't go into the detail now, but if you're interested, please take a look at it. Thank you.
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to add my thanks to Counselor Carlon for this great report, and I particularly want to emphasize the, the need for, for trees and not, in addition to making sure the street trees survive, how can we get more trees in, as part of this design? Because we know that our canopy is dying, and we need to plant a lot more trees. So this is a great opportunity to marry those concerns and have development and trees at the same time, because yes, we can do that. And also, the, the solar roofs, I'm very supportive of that concept, and I also would like us to think really hard about whether we need to raise the streets, because we're going to have a lot of flooding there. Thank you.
On placing the matter on file, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it. We have one late resolution. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, before we get to...
Oh, yes, Counselor Simmons, right. Before we...
Thank you. Before we get to late resolutions, I wanted to ask unanimous consent to be recorded as present on policy order number four.
On suspension, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Counselor Simmons has asked for her vote to be recorded as present on policy order number four.
Whoop-whoop.
Counselor Siddiqui?
Mr. Mayor, can I, could I, and to the clerk, can I be recorded as, as present for the vote that I missed?
Okay, let's do these one at a time. So on, Counselor Simmons is asked to be recorded as present in policy order number four. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Was it a roll call? If it was a voice vote, you're okay.
I'm good. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Late resolution.
Excuse me.
We have a late resolution that the council go on record wishing Sylvia Savida Kiba a happy birthday, submitted by Counselor Toomey.
On the resolution making unanimous upon consent, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Announcements? I have a couple. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I, we've already heard about the Martin Luther King Day of Service a week from today, but tomorrow night at the Central Square Library at 6:30 is the annual Martin Luther King Day celebratory lecture. I guess that happens every year, and the guest speaker is Professor Danielle Allen from Harvard. She is a very distinguished scholar and of ethics and government and civic engagement, all very relevant topics, both to Dr. King's work and to our current times. She's also a MacArthur Genius Grant winner, so I hope that if anyone has time to come, come to the Central Square Library at 6:30. There will also be some musical entertainment. Thanks.
Thank you. Other announcements? Counselor Carlon?
Mr. Mayor, it's related to the schedule. I just want to confirm with the clerk that indeed we are meeting. There was some question whether we were going to meet on Tuesday for this ordinance committee, and it's written that we are, so I'm just confirming it with you.
Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Carlon, I have heard nothing to the contrary. I don't know if that will be something that'll happen at the meeting.
Great. I just wanted to announce it publicly. I'll be here.
Okay. I have a couple, well, we heard about many helping hands, but also, prior to that, is Cambridge's annual MLK Day commemoration and remembrance, Monday, January 21st, 11:00 a.m. to 12:45, at St. Peter's Episcopal Church across the street on Mass Ave. And then from 12:45 to 1:45, there will be lunch served, so you can eat and get across the street by 2 o'clock for many helping hands. So that is next week. On Thursday, January 24th, the mayor's office is partnering with the Red Cross to hold a blood drive at the YMCA gym from all day, from 12 to 5. The Red Cross has indicated there is a shortage of, of donated blood, and so we, we have partnered with them. They will be there, so if folks want to come in and make a donation, that would be great. And then the, as I mentioned earlier, the mayor's disaster relief fund for the victims of today's fire. Folks can, if they would like to write a check, they could send that check care of the Finance Department, Cambridge City Hall, 795 Massachusetts Avenue, Cambridge, Mass. 02139. If they would like to make a contribution online, they can go to the city website, cambridgem.gov, or the mayor's page. It's also been posted, the city has tweeted it, our office has tweeted it, as well as put it on Facebook. So there's a number, number of ways it's out there. Counselor Siddiqui, do you want to do the...
Oh, the plug?
The deep?
Cambridge digs deep, January, I keep saying July. January 26th, Saturday, 12 to 2, at the Sierra's Main Cafeteria. Dr. Denise will be leading us in a pretty well-thought-out workshop, so if you can come, we'd love to see you there. We're beginning, we've been doing outreach, but the next two weeks, three weeks are critical to get a good turnout. Thank you.
And there'll be food and childcare, and one question, I think we both have gotten a lot. People have said, well, I didn't go to the first one. Can I come to this? You know, yes, they are not built on each other, so if you've missed one, come to the next one. You know, we want to get a, we want to double that 150 number that we had in the first meeting. Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add on quickly to the digs deep. I did start a translation process for the original presentation, so if anyone is willing and able to help with that, I'm using Google Translate, but I need actual language experts to verify and complete the process.
And, and once that's all verified and good, we can put it on the, on the site. Anything else? Any other announcements? No? On a motion by Counselor Toomey to adjourn, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.